Good afternoon. The time now is 5:07 on the April 28th, 2025. I would like to start with a special meeting, strategy planning workshop meeting. And I know that we have a couple of hours. Councilor are not here right now, but they are on their way. But we just go ahead and start it now. Why don't we go ahead and take the roll call?
Thank you. Mayor Nguyen?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I'm here.
District One, Councilwoman Van West. District Three, Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
District Four, Councilmember Nguyen? May I give a quorum with District One, Councilwoman Van West, and District Four, Councilmember Nguyen, absent?
All right. Thank you very much. And today, pledge of allegiance will be by Vice Mayor Manzo. And invocation will ask City Attorney Scott Porter is going to help us out. Please stand.
Ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Dear Creator God, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Please guide us as we try to make our city just a bit better. Please guide our decision makers, inform us of how we can do the common good, and we be inspired to make this world a better place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you, Vice Mayor Manzo and City Attorney Porter. And at this time, let's go for auto communication. City Clerk, would you please go ahead and read the instruction into the record, please?
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step up to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. We have one speaker, Terry Rains.
Hello. The last strategic plan workshop was held on April 10th, 2024, during which six-month objectives were developed for the goals covering the period of April 10th, 2024 through November 1st, 2024. The City Council was supposed to meet again in November for the final closeout and report of the first three-year strategic plan prior to the installation of the new council member, but that didn't happen, probably because the two obstructionists, not here and absent and late, were busy disrupting city business. The one-line agenda description Strategic Planning Workshop facilitated by Ryder Smith of Trippity Smith tells us nothing. The 2024 workshop agenda provides an actual outline of what would transpire during the workshop. So what are we going to see happen today? Close out the former three-year strategic plan or create a new three-year plan? If the latter, you are skipping a very important step of accountability. I did see the strategic plan interviews on your calendars earlier this month. I assume those private interviews were to learn what each council member thinks the cities should be, the city's priorities and new goals, and/or to discuss and create new SWOT lists, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. But since these interviews were done behind closed doors, how is the public supposed to know? Very disappointing and wrong that the city chose to only publish the strengths generated at the last session. The public deserves to hear the staff and council's perspective on weaknesses, opportunities, and threats just as much as their perspective on strengths. If the city only had strengths, there wouldn't need a strategic plan. There are no documents or even a staff reporter outlined with today's agenda. The public has no idea what the plan is for today's session. Please consider this my formal request to immediately receive copies of any and all documents, including draft SWOT lists that have been distributed to the council prior to or at the start of today's meeting. Furthermore, the city's website was never updated to include the objectives set at the April 2024 workshop. The last updates were from two years ago, from a workshop that took place on February 7th, 2023. There was supposed to be a second workshop in 2023, but that never happened either. There's nothing on the website about the April 2024 session, nor is there an updated matrix reflecting the new objectives set then or the updated status of each. I found a copy of that matrix from a later city council meeting where the new objectives were formally adopted. At first glance, from the outside looking in, it appears that several objectives set last year have not been met yet. The most important aspects of a strategic plan are creating measurable objectives and frequently monitoring the progress of meeting those objectives with full and direct accountability. A specific plan without full and direct accountability, constant monitoring, and regular follow-through is just words on paper and completely useless. If any of you are not prepared to take this exercise seriously and put in the work, Amy, you don't belong on this council and you should resign. We need critical-thinking servant leaders to steer the ship, not grandstanding egomaniacs, as my sign says, which I didn't wear, but it says prioritize the budget, not the bull, you know what? And if... There should be some penalty for not showing up on time for a strategic plan session. Everybody else is here, including staff. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. And so today's strategic planning workshop facilitated by Ryder Smith and Trippity Smith. So with that, I would like to open up and ask you to go ahead and present your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen. Christine, shall I start? Do you want to... Any introductory comments of me first before I get rolling?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that. So our past strategic plan that we did three years, a little over three years ago, it was really our first... It was our first passive developing a strategic plan with the council and the organization. As with many things on first attempts, there's definitely a learning curve. And given the circumstances that transpired over those three years, there were objectives that were developed. There were goals that were developed, objectives that went along with those goals, many of which were met and others that were not met. This is part of that learning curve. You know, there were many things that happened during that time as well that gave... that has now given us a perspective on how we want to move forward with the next three years. So the goal of today's strategic plan workshop is really closing out the previous strategic plan, but also taking those goals and objectives and morphing into the new three-year strategic plan. So we did have a different facilitator. That facilitator is no longer doing strategic plan workshops. And so we're excited to bring back Ryder and his team, who helped us with the last strategic plan workshop. And the method that he's using is a little bit different, a little similar, but also different in other ways as well, because we want to make sure that we're catering the process to be digestible for, you know, for our council and staff, as well as making sure that we're using the best method in order to develop achievable objectives. So with that, I will turn this over to Ryder and we'll get started.
Very well. Thank you very much, City Manager. I appreciate it. Mayor, it's an honor to be here. Thank you very much. Honorable members of the City Council, it's good to be back in your chamber.
Sorry to interrupt. Before we get started, I had a question for our city manager. So, excuse me. The status of the... the status of the strategic plan that we had in place, do we know, like, I don't... Should we got a list of what was crossed off? Where we at? I mean, I know there was... I mean, we had... At one time, we had a map of, you know, status, and it would be updated every now and then, but do we know where we're at?
So as part of... Yeah. So as part of what we're going to go through in today's presentation is going through that list.
Okay, was that in...
Yeah, we didn't provide. So we didn't provide information this time around as far as the council, you know, for anybody, for that matter. So we didn't provide with an updated list in advance. We, you know, as mentioned, there were interviews that were conducted with each and one, every one of you, which was different from what was done previously. You know, we're allowing Ryder and his team to use what has worked in some of his strategic plan methods. The reason that we decided not to provide some of that information preliminarily as well is, you know, context is really important. And sometimes when you have some of these materials put out in advance, it gives a, you know, it gives room for narratives to be created in advance that really... It really kind of muddies the process that we're trying to walk into. So as we're doing this today and you're all seeing things for the first time, that really helps with, you know, with trying to keep this neutral from the get-go.
Yeah, no, I just was really excited and I was really looking forward to accomplishing some of the items that were on that list as far as the specific plans are concerned.
Yes.
And I have asked for updates as far as where we're at with that. I mean, that's... Hopefully that's... We haven't lost the focus on that, so...
Some of it will actually be part of today as well, discussing some of those previous goals and advancing those.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Please proceed. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Christine, for your comments about the context for this and just really having a nice, hopefully open, pre-ranging discussion today about setting those goals and objectives. I will just, for clarification on process as well, just to make sure I bring the community up to speed on this too. Our standard process is to do some initial review of prior existing goals and objectives, have a conversation with the city manager to get some more context for where the city is at. Obviously, we had the benefit of being here last year, so we had some existing context. And then we really like to conduct one-on-one interviews with each of the council members to hear what their concerns and issues are, as well as bounce some other ideas off them to help float ideas to the top. I find this pre-work to be really helpful, and I think it gets the juices flowing for you to think creatively too as we work through a process. And we also had a survey form available, or I should say, just like a quick feedback forum for some concept to get some additional ideas to flow some of that conversation. And really, that was designed to help spring some thoughts in your head, and then we reviewed those in our conversations that we had one-on-one. We subsequently reviewed that with the city manager, and the city manager, and then we find ourselves here today. So you're all getting to see this equally for the first time and see what the content looks like. A couple of notes I'll make, too, is some ideas were surfaced that there seemed to be a lot of consensus around. And then some ideas were surfaced primarily because they might have been surfaced later in the interview process, that we didn't have a chance to really surface with other council members for possible consideration and getting some sense of feedback. So therefore, they may not have consensus, but that's not because necessarily there was objection to them. It just, we didn't have... We didn't go back and ask other council members what they thought. So it was just a timing issue. And my objective today is to make sure I surface all the concepts that were surfaced in the conversations to give them all equal time and an opportunity to be discussed in a healthy way. So that's the end. That's how we flow this process. Today is also a working session, so eventually I'm going to transition off my laptop in this presentation deck, and we're going to turn it over to my good friend Abby over here from Team Trippity Smith, who will have a living, breathing Google document going that we will have up on the screen. And we're going to collaboratively work through that document to hopefully come to both answering some of the questions that you just raised, Vice Mayor, as well as talking through new objectives and goals that were surfaced through the conversations that we have. So that's the... That's the goal. My hope is that by doing some of those pre-interviews, it makes today's conversation efficient and effective and helps us really focus on some of the meat and potatoes in a collaborative fashion. All right. And I think I have a magic clicker that will allow me to click through. Of course, I don't know if that clicked on my screen. Oh, yeah. Hang on. Thank you for the tech support there. I appreciate it. Class A service. All right. So first of all, just briefly, we're going to talk about our strategic planning overview, as I mentioned, go through a review of the 2225 goals. I'll ask Christine to make some additional comments on some of that. Again, many of the objectives that were not achieved in the prior goal period we have in the current matrix, draft matrix that we've put together. Then we'll discuss the 2025 through 28 goals that we surfaced as a result of the conversation. So we're again looking at a three-year timeline. And then we'll talk about what our next steps are for the organization in terms of the strategic planning process. So just a friendly reminder that the strategic planning process is a process where the City Council sets shared goals and objectives to help direct city staff on how to focus their efforts and city resources. You are the board of directors of the city. You are the policymakers that help outline where you want to go down the field. And Christine is your quarterback that's there to throw the ball, hand it off to the running back, and otherwise execute with the team that you have at City Hall. So it's immensely helpful for city staff, particularly your city manager, to have that key understanding of where you want to go and how you want to get down that field, so she can execute on that process to help you all win and as a result, help the city of Westminster win as well. As I mentioned, in our strategic planning process, we had a kickoff call back in March. We did our... We had questionnaires in the city council interviews throughout the month of April. And then we have our actual strategic planning workshop today. And then we'll be going through, digesting that content, finalizing the work product from today, and turning it into a report that'll be in the May-June period, just in time to kick off the new fiscal year in 2026, or 2025 to 2026. This is the existing city mission statement that we were operating under. And our scope of work here was not to necessarily tweak or adjust this mission statement. We were operating with it as is. There had been some prior discussions about potentially modifying this mission statement. I didn't sense a huge appetite for making a modification at the time it was previously surfaced. But if that is something you wish to do in the future, I would encourage conversation or discussion about that as we move through the rest of the presentation today. But as it stands right now, the mission statement for the city of Westminster, for those that are listening at home, is the city of Westminster is committed to providing the highest quality of service, ensuring that Westminster is a desirable place to live, work, play, and do business. And I will just observe that many cities have "live, work, play" as a pretty common tagline. I appreciate Westminster's effort to be further distinctive by noting that it is a great place to do business. All right. So we had prior adopted broad goals, and I will remind you also, and for the public's benefit, that we have goal areas that kind of encapsulate where we want to go. And then within those, we have specific objectives of things we'd like to go tackle that we view as being consistent with the goal areas that we have identified. These prior goals are outlined here. Number one, achieve financial stability. Two, develop and implement specific plan for Little Saigon, the downtown district, and the west side. Number three is attract, develop, and retain well-qualified city staff members... Excuse me, staff members. It's implied that it's city. And four is improve customer service delivery to the community. So as a reminder, these were the four broad goal areas. We had objectives under several of these. So for example, previously under achieve financial stability was addressing a sales tax measure to generate additional revenues. Check off accomplishments on that, for example. And I think with that, I will pause for a second and ask the city manager if she would like to make any additional comments on these goals or achievements under these goal areas.
I don't, actually.
Okay.
That was pretty... It was pretty self-explanatory.
All right. Very well. As noted, where we had...
I do have the question, though. On the second one, develop and implement specific plan for Little Saigon, downtown district, and west side. For that one, we also have the Pacific Plan for their civic center, right? And that's not included in here, because we already have the Pacific Plan for that. Correct?
I'm looking for my... Go ahead, Dolph.
So there is a master list of specific plan priorities. And the... All of those that are listed in the general plan are ranked. The previous council did rank those. I think as it pertains to the bullet item or the number two on the slide, the previous... At the beginning of the last strategic plan goal, those were the ones that were prioritized by that council.
Yes. So we specifically discuss about that.
We... Yeah. We received direct direction. We received specific direction to focus on those.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And if I can chime in on that one, I think we had them... I don't think it was in that particular order, wasn't it downtown?
Those are... Yeah, the...
There's not... It's not as specific, like, priority-wise.
Yeah. I think we... Maybe we let Ryder continue, because I think some of those... Some of those questions will be answered as he moves on with his presentation. And if not, then we could go back and I can touch on those.
Sorry if we interrupted that.
Oh, no. Not all. This is... Mayor, this is very much a conversation for us to have today. We have a free format for that, and you are correct to raise that question. We do have some general objective identified around the specific plan that we can fill in with more details. We worked through this together today. So I appreciate it being raised as a question. Okay, back to our magical PowerPoint. So just of note, these were the previously adopted goal areas. A brief comment I'll make, which is government in general operates well when it is not whipsawed and pulled around in different directions all the time. And recognizing that, and a lot of our goal work is long-term and takes time, particularly when you're dealing with land use issues or fiscal stability issues, that is not something you solve in three years and then move on. And it is helpful for organizations to have consistency. So often, when I do these strategic planning processes, I would just generally say our goals are evolving. They are not fundamental revolutions every time we come to the game. Now, sometimes that can change. Obviously, that is the prerogative of you as a city council. But my general observation is it is healthy for local government organizations, government in general, to have pretty consistent processes and long-term goals that it's looking at. And we just evolve towards things as the ground game changes. So with that, I'll shift into draft goals and objectives for the new cycle. So these are up for your consideration again. These are draft based upon the conversations we had. You will not see a lot of... You will see evolution here. So the first goal area that we identified is sustaining, is achieve financial stability. Part of the gist of that conversation was focused on the fact that while tremendous progress was provided by addressing a sales tax measure in the city, and I know you are all very appreciative of the community's trust in the city to help execute, put those funds to good use, there are additional opportunities to achieve financial stability. And the outlook, while improved... and the outlook, while improved, still requires additional work to achieve long-term viability and sustainability for the city. Within that, we identified several additional objective areas, some of which, again, remain consistent with previously adopted objectives, and some of which are new. So under, provide an update to the city council on the status of creative revenue ideas, several of these remain the same, but then particularly when it came to the explore other opportunities to generate revenues for the city with a broader way of potential tax options. And again, I will just note, this is exploration only, this is not a directive to go do this, because partly, I think you'd want to understand the revenue implications. We identified, there seemed to be consensus that it is least worth asking the question of what additional revenue options were available for the city, and how could they have a financial impact on the fiscal sustainability of the city. Second, we identified a discussion around development of an economic development strategy and report to the city council. These are, many of which are carryovers from prior objectives that have been identified, some of which, again, have been achieved through hiring of particular positions. Third objective was research the establishment of business improvement district and present a report to the city council. Fourth item here was establish a policy to set priorities on the expenditures of new tax revenues, working with the finance department to take into account existing needs. And then finally, and this is a newer objective that was added, which is assess the fiscal impact to city of cash businesses not accurately remitting sales taxes and explore audit options to address the issue. And I will just note that there was consensus on these various items that I've just surfaced. And I'm happy, we're going to go back and revisit all these in detail, so if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just roll through all these as a presentation matter, and then we can come back and address each one of these as a goal area, and then get into the details on each. All right, we'll go to the next slide, which is a change-up in the previous goal, which was very rather specific for a goal area, and that it identified a bunch of specific plans to go tackle. And here, because of the nature of all the objectives that were identified, I thought it would be more effective to rename this goal area, implement and support effective land use policies that encourage quality development. And the intent here was to not ignore the specific plans, which we do subsequently identify as an objective area, but to make sure we broaden our lens to include other work that's being done in the city to address overall land use policies that are important. So within this particular policy area, you'll see, provide the city council with an update on the city's recently approved zoning phase one study, and the status of the city's ongoing zoning phase two study, including an overview of the project schedule. Provided the city council a bus tour of areas in Orange County and Southern California that have been redeveloped to successfully, to successful mixed-use projects. Third one identified was complete the citywide economic development study and initiate general plan amendments throughout the city. Fourth was provide the city council with an update on the general plan implementation strategies related to the city's mixed-use districts, specifically the recently approved District Two Mixed Use Downtown. Number five is deliver a scope of work for recommendation, recommended District Two Mixed Use Downtown specific plan that includes strategies for already identified goals of the general plan. And then two new additions was complete the corridor intensifications, which is a relatively new objective that somewhat has already started but needs to be completed, and those, that's kind of the on-the-ground evolution of learning that helped inform these evolutions of the strategic plan. And the second one was develop and implement specific plans for key areas in the city. And we could certainly have a conversation about naming those, but this was our effort to not lose sight of the very important effort of doing specific plans in the city areas that the council has previously identified. The third goal remains relatively unchanged, as some of this work is ongoing, and some of the work still needed to carry over from the previous goal. So the goal area remains attract, develop, and retain well-qualified staff members. Within the objectives here are monitor accountability for mandatory staff training and/or professional development through the annual evaluation process for staff. Second was to create job bulletins to replace class specs, which will be used for recruiting postings, recruitment postings. Third was identify and review and revise as-needed department processes to improve operational efficiency and present to the city manager. Conduct a classic comp study, this actually is a, I think this was actually a new one that was added, so it should be in a slightly different color, but there was consensus around adding this. Next was conclude union negotiations successfully in a way that respects our staff, but also does not destroy the financial future of the city. The, next to last one there was revisit the recruitment process and our strategies for attracting talent to the city. So those last three are all newer objectives where we had consensus. And then the final one, provide council resources and training to be effective, to be effective, meaning helping you be effective as council members and policy developers, whether it's policy innovation, ideas, state legislative impacts, conferences. So it was just ensuring you're being provided the resources you need to be effective council members when it comes to policy matters and policy development. This goal area also remains the same of improve customer service delivery to the community, with goal, objective one being develop and improve customer service training for all public-facing divisions. Goal two being evaluate and make recommendations regarding planning and building division forms, templates, specifications, and informational materials used by the public, provide and update the city council, and then add an annual review process following the implementation of this. Third was to evaluate current online user processes and functionality, and seek technology to improve online customer service experience. And the fourth objective was to streamline and modernize the planning and permitting process, and I believe these last two are relatively new objectives. And then two additional ones that we didn't get consensus on yet, but which were floated, were to improve the business licensing process, so draw distinction from the permitting process, to keep business informed about the status of their business licensing process, and overall improve that experience. And then number two was to improve overall customer service at City Hall, specifically in how staff interacts with visitors at City Hall. So what's that experience when you walk into the front door of City Hall, and you encounter staff, and you start to ask your questions, or seek guidance, or otherwise seek staff And then, based upon an array of very helpful comments and suggestions that were surfaced by council members, I added these additional, this new goal area, which I would broadly define as enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the city. So this has a lot to do with the visual look and feel of your experience in Westminster as you enter from points of egress and ingress, or as you're just driving around town, or as you're cruising through neighborhoods. And there was consensus on these first two, which was revisit the code enforcement process to be more proactive. Broadly speaking, I would say in some communities, they take a position of, we'll just wait till somebody calls to complain, then we'll go out and tackle that. In other communities, they wish to have a more proactive status that says, we'd like to make sure we identify things that are having material impact on quality of life in our community, and try to work cooperatively with either residents or businesses to address those issues. This, of course, requires additional staff work, in the code enforcement department in particular, but having council support for this proactive status is an important step, and a good guide for Christine and her team. The second one was take steps towards city beautification to improve quality of life and attract businesses and developers. So these steps could help be further defined with council guidance, or with staff making suggestions around how we focus on beautification. Sometimes this is focused on medians, sometimes this is focused on gateway experiences, sometimes this is focused on just where you're doing certain plantings, or how you're addressing graffiti, or how you're addressing some of the visuals along major corridors. But in general, the goal would be to improve the overall visual sightline experience for those that are visiting or living in the city. And then three additional ones that came up through the process, but I didn't yet have a chance to surface, so I'd be looking for consensus guidance on these today, would be to continue addressing the homelessness issues throughout the city that have an impact on the community, to sustain and address public safety issues in Westminster. And then finally, spark and engage community pride with, and city partners to support beautification efforts. And those city partners were identified as Midway Cities Special District, the school district, and the county as well, all of whom play a part in helping make Westminster a great place to be. It could be critical partners in addressing some of these beautification efforts. So with that, that's the high-level overview, we're going to switch our screen to Abby's screen, she's going to have a big Google document in a matrix format that you're relatively familiar with. So we'll watch that pop up here, hopefully, in a hot second. And I would love to turn our attention to a discussion about the goal areas, first and foremost, just to make sure we have some consensus on those goal areas, and then dive into the details on each one of the objectives that we identify under the goal areas. So I suppose, Mayor, my first question would be, are there any questions or concerns with the goal areas specifically achieve financial stability, implement and support effective land use policies that encourage quality development, attract, develop, and retain well-qualified city staff members, improve customer service delivery to the community, and the new goal area of enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the city? Any comments, questions, or concerns from council about those five goal areas? Okay, great. I will also just want to comment that I was, it was really interesting, and not unusual necessarily, but really interesting that there was such a consistent tone of voice around the areas of concern that you each shared in our conversations together, and I appreciate the, two things I heard, was passion for the community, and, and then passion about very similar policy areas of interest, that I think was really great to hear from my perspective, and made, I think, some of these things really stand out as areas to go tackle and address. Okay, so we have a screen up, hopefully, that's readable on your end, is that zoomed in enough? For my eyeballs, I'm confident it wouldn't be, but I suspect your eyeballs are red than mine. So why don't we discuss achieve financial stability? As you'll note, we're following a pattern that you are used to, which is identifying a timeline of when, who is responsible for this area, and then some specific details of the what around each one of these objective areas that I already surfaced in the documents you've seen. I will note on the screen that the bottom item is identified as an area that we would need to determine if there is consensus on, in which case, or excuse me, it's a newer area, but there was consensus on this. So I guess I'll first, this is also, I should note that this phase in the conversation too, this is where we collaborate with city staff to also set some reasonable timeline on how we think we can go about achieving these objectives. So I will either defer to your city manager, or the, your highly qualified city staff directors in the audience to help us identify appropriate timelines for some of these objectives. So the first objective that's identified here is focused on updating the city council on the status of creative revenue ideas, noting that we are adding this additional revenue area of explore other opportunities to generate revenue for the city, including transient occupancy tax, which is otherwise known as hotel tax, cannabis taxes, digital billboard revenues, and/or expanding user utility tax.
Mayor, if I can provide an update-
Yes, please.
-on some of, on some of these. So originally, the goal for this particular objective that stemmed from evaluating creative revenue ideas, annexation was, was part of that. Investigating more efficient use of city properties is also something that developed over time as well. Annexation, we're currently in the process of, of, you know, working with the county on, on that, and so I'm not sure that that's something that needs to remain on here as a part of the strategic, strategic plan. Goal is we're, we're moving, you know, we are moving through that process. In terms of reviewing general fund revenues, how they're being invested, we can certainly, you know, we can certainly work with our finance department and get a little bit more clarification, clarification, you know, from the council as to what, what investments you're looking at additionally, but we can, you know, at the, at the very minimum, provide the types of investments that we do now. Investigating more efficient use of city properties currently owned by the city for income generation, economic development, as you know, we've moved forward with some of our properties, and we're in processes of doing studies on whether we're using these facilities, you know, at the best use. But as far as exploring other opportunities to generate revenue for the city, which includes transient occupancy tax, cannabis taxes, digital billboard revenues, and/or expanded user utility tax, we have been working through that digital billboard revenue. As you know, we've approved, this council has approved a, a citywide billboard program, and so we are moving toward that. If there are any other opportunities that this council is interested in exploring based on this list tonight, I think it would be beneficial for us to extract that from this particular, this particular objective and create a separate objective for that. So if you're, for example, wanting to look at a TOT, you know, we can certainly pull that as its own individual line item, because, you know, providing updates in some of these are very extensive, anything related to taxes is definitely very extensive, so it would have a different timeline than, let's say, if staff was to provide an update on the annexation of the county islands, that's going to be three sentences, we're still talking to the county, right? So just keep those in mind.
So, question, city manager. So like on that one, annexation, since is that, you're saying to like separate that in different lines because of a timeline?
So because the council has expressed interest in the annexations, we have been moving forward with that process. So we have someone that's, that's a consultant for us, that's working, you know, with LAFCO and the county, because the annexation, annexation process is very different. So if it's a matter of providing an update to the council on the status of the annexation, we'll do that when that time's appropriate, there is really no update to provide you right now, except that we're still moving forward, it's a negotiation process, et cetera. So, you know, would, would we be able to provide an update within the six months on the annexation that's a productive, meaningful one? Maybe, maybe not, just depends where we are in the process, as you know, the county's had some challenges. But for something like investigating more efficient use of city properties, that's also going to have a different timeline, because as you know, we are investigating the use of certain properties, and some of those studies are going to be a lot more extensive than, let's say, you know, evaluating a particular building than another particular building.
So-
Yeah, so I, I feel like those would have different timelines for those specific items.
So we should separate it into another, another its own column, you're saying?
Yeah, and that's if you're really interested in having, you know, these updates stay on the matrix, because certainly, we already have direction with the council to move forward with some of these things based on the last three-year plan. We can certainly just keep moving forward with that, and then providing the updates to you. I leave that to your discretion, but if you were going to put some timelines on these, they would best be listed as individual items.
It would be more consistent with the format, too.
Yeah, we can do that, for sure.
Okay.
And then what about the, the last bullet point, explore other opportunities for generate revenue? That one, would you feel comfortable as far as the timeline is concerned on that one?
Well, it's really going to depend on, first of all, if any of those pique your interest. So for example, the transient occupancy tax, you know, we would be looking at what our tax rates look like, what neighboring cities' tax rates look like, the process to, if you're going to make any changes, what that process looks like, et cetera. So it just really depends on your comfortability level in us presenting you a report, and then, you know, you'll, you'll have, you'll have a decision-making point at that point, if you're going to want to proceed or move forward with, you know, if it's an outreach component, et cetera. Exploring other opportunities could actually be the outreach component first, you could decide tonight, maybe you'd like to poke around and see if anyone's really interested, you know, in a change to the TOT, and then make your decision based on that. So timeline's really going to depend on which method you want to go first.
I guess that I'm confused right now, I want to know exactly, that you're looking for the timeline, which asks when. Are you looking for a general timeline, like, in a couple of years, or, because-
No.
Each, each of these items, I know is different. You know, annexation, or, you know, let's say cannabis taxes, or digital billboard, we have to go through many steps in order to get there, so-
So, yes, so essentially, yes, thank you for that. So essentially, providing an update to the city council on the status of creative revenue ideas. So we would be looking to provide an update on these particular things within the six months. And so all of the, all of these goals are three-year goals, but these objectives that we're reading off right now are really meant to be six-month objectives. So there are going to be certain checkpoints. So let's say, for example, let's say the council wants to increase transient occupancy tax, we want to look at the tax, right? So in the first six months, we're going to provide you an update on what that process looks like. So we're going to have to tell, you know, we're going to have to come to you and say, hey, it's going to be a consultant, it's going to cost this much, we're going to have to do, you know, this much in legal, you know, in legal work, the process is going to look like this further on. And so by the time we've provided that update for you within these six months, you'll be at a decision-making point where you decide in the next six-month objective cycle, what that next step is. That next step might be like, okay, let's work toward getting- That next step might be like, okay, let's work toward getting it on the ballot for the November election of 2026, something along those lines, right? So they're, they're pretty much milestones in order to meet a, you know, a larger goal.
I understand that, but let's say that we are being reasonable with staff. We don't want to overload, bombard you-
Absolutely.
-with everything. So let's say that we, we were so excited, we said, okay, why don't we get all these done in three months? Then what can you say?
Well, and so, and so the great thing about this process is Ryder's taken the information that you all have individually, independently provided to him as ideas, and so these were all ideas that were brought up.
Okay.
So you are right, I appreciate, you know, the expectations, and it's a lot to take in six months, and we're barely on the first goal of the, or the first objective, first goal. So, you know, when it comes to providing some of that general, you know, the generalized idea, it's definitely not as extensive, because as, as, you know, the last three years where we've brought certain items to you, we gave more of a big picture overview of the item, which doesn't take as long to do, but it gives you some very clear checkpoints of, this is going to cost you X amount of dollars. It's going to cost you, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars for a specific plan, for example. So are you really interested? It's going to cost, you know, it's going to, you know, require 18 months of research. Is that really something you want us to invest our, you know, invest our time into and our money into? So it's, you know, it's really just dependent upon what the council feels is the priority. We've talked about cannabis at some point in the last three-year plan, for example. You know, we've, we've brought a few presentations around, you know, is this a time that you want to talk about numbers? What do real numbers look like? Expanding the user utility tax, we haven't really talked about that. Is that something you're interested in? You know, is it even feasible for us to do? So it really depends, you know, it's at the discretion of the council, and it's really at your direction, what you feel like is the priority. And maybe some of these, it's, it's not going to be achievable within the six months, but we can maybe build it in so that we're working on a component of it now, and then in the next round, we'll expand on it, or we'll, we'll, you know, we'll follow up on that. Let's, you know, it really just depends on your priority.
And if I-
Which of these look good to you?
If I could just interject, one of the probably critical point about particularly revenue measures is what's the actual impact, right? Like how much revenue, which would be part of a study that would have to be done that takes time, but, you know, if a TOT only moves the needle by $200,000 a year, but a cannabis tax moves the needle by $2 million a year, then that's probably a relatively important number to have, too. And I think that would have to be part of any study work that's done on consideration of any of these, of these measures as part of that comparison.
The great thing about a lot of these as well is, you know, we try not to reinvent the wheel. So thanks to our networking with other cities, et cetera, and looking at data from other cities, and just, you know, some of the experts that we work with, we can, we can provide, we can provide just a very, you know, high-level overview preliminarily for you to make, you know, some kind of a decision, whether you're interested in moving on to the next one. So it's not really doing that full research yet, but it is a good amount of information where you can, you can peek if this council's going to be interested.
Well, can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's fine.
Can you just give us like some, just general, like really preliminary information as far as the revenue generation of each one of these items, like the potential?
On the-
Like on the TOT, the cannabis, I think digital billboard, we probably already kind of know about that.
We've-
And the expanded user utility tax. What are the potentials? We don't know what, I mean, we had some, like you mentioned earlier, we had some presentations on two potential cannabis businesses, but those were just there for their own-
Yes.
... project.
Yes. So, yes, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. I would say the recommendation on this particular item, so provide an update to the city council on the status of creative revenue ideas. We'll leave the three that say revenue general fund, review of general fund revenues, annexation of the county islands, and investigate more efficient use of city properties. That would be one item. And then I would say you create a new objective that is just that, explore other opportunities to generate revenue for the city. And then the bullet points would be transient occupancy tax, cannabis taxes, and expanded user tax.
And then what do you think on the timeline with it? What do you think, thirty-six months? Next month?
Next month would be great, since we're talking about budgets, but I think some of that's going to require, well, some of it's going to require our city attorney's office to help us with the processes, because obviously, taxes have, you know, different ways to, to handle those. As far as timeline goes...
So as far as, from a legal perspective, we could provide analysis as far as procedures for each one of those in, you know, a few weeks, certainly. I don't think that's going to be the holdup. The, I think the holdup would just be the realities of there's limited staff time.
Whatever we want to decide, it has to be realistic, right? So otherwise, you know, we, we'd set the timeline, but we can't do it, and, you know, it doesn't do anything good for us.
Well, right now, right now, our focus is, our focus right now is obviously adopting a balanced budget, so that's what, that's what we're working on right now. Without having some of my staff here, that's not the department head team, you know, the reality on some of these items is the city manager's office takes a brunt of the work when it comes to driving, you know, these particular items. And so I don't want to speak on behalf of my staff, who are also working on 50,000 other additional duties as assigned, but, I mean, I'd probably say August is probably a reasonable timeframe to provide information on those other opportunities. We can provide it earlier if need be, but it would have to be like in June. So we're not meeting in July, so.
Okay.
But if it's, if, like I said, if it's a priority for the council, we can certainly push it forward. And then as far as the, providing an update to the city council on the status of the previous creative revenues, I mean, that's probably something, we don't really have anything to report right now, but maybe in, like in September or so, we can certainly provide an update on those. So I'd say September for that first one, but on the exploring other opportunities, and we can take out digital billboard revenues on that one as well. Take that bullet out.
On the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've, we've talked digital billboard revenues forever.
You already have a lot of details on that?
We are, yes.
All right. No more exploration done, it's explored.
We've got a handle on that.
Okay.
I would say, maybe on that one, second meeting, second meeting of June, instead of waiting till, till August?
Sorry, which one are we talking about here?
The last one, the exploring other opportunities.
Oh, second meeting in June, okay.
Yeah. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but I would say, yeah, second meeting in June.
Just want to remind you, whatever the date that you committed, that we are going to hold you responsible for it.
Yeah.
I mean, don't, I mean, don't put yourself in a situation that, you know, we can do August, it's safer.
No, it's just a guesstimate right now, and hopefully that they can achieve within that timeframe. If not, then we have to move.
Yeah, I mean, are there any particular, are there particular ones that you want discussed before others for, under those other opportunities? Because that expanding user utility tax, I'm going to volunteer my public works director to work on that one, so.
Which one is that you think to be the easiest to do of the three, the three bullet points?
Um-
Easiest by analysis, or easiest by-
Analysis timeline, like as time is, time considers, to be clear.
I mean, really, the TOT is pretty self-explanatory, and then cannabis taxes, the, the work, the framework for that is, you know, exists in other cities. So I think it's really just a comparison to see what other cities are doing, what some of the revenues they're generating. I'd probably say those two are easier than looking at the user utility tax.
So you wanted, let's just separate those and do that one in August, expand user utility tax, put that in August.
Let me see my finance director.
I can give an update on the transient occupancy tax and utility users tax, basically 1% on transient occupancy tax, 125,000, 1% on the utility users tax, a million and a half. I mean, the tax, they have to go back, they have to go up to a goal. And I can certainly give a summary of the budget on what other cities are doing and what our revenue is. That really came in very well.
No, but then we would also need to know what, what the cost would be to do.
Do we have to add any more help on that? I can certainly do my analysis.
Do we want to split, do we want to-
Thank you.
Yeah, do we want to split those, or combine?
Time, I apologize, I didn't realize, we need to be recording this audio for the sake of our audience at home.
This feels like the daytime talk show right now.
Yep.
Now you got to sing a song with that microphone now.
Sorry, that was just a really, I pulled up the budget and wanted just to give you a quick idea on those two items, but, I mean, it can be part of the budget, I'm not sure. It's council's direction, for sure.
Would you mind repeating those two numbers, too, that you shared?
Oh, of course. So our utility users tax, if we were to do a 1% on that, it'd be about a million and a half. It's, it's 4% right now, and we generate about 5.8 million. Our TOT is 8%, and we generate around a million, so a 1%, I mean, I just divided about 125,000.
It seemed to me that you very much have that lineup already, and I think that the opportunities to generate the revenue is number one priority for us, so I don't disagree with you that if we have to make it priority, I think that, that item should go first.
Okay.
So with the, with the date that we have there, in June 2025, I think that I do agree with that.
For all three of those?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So for that second, so are we, are we comfortable with the first item of that last item that we just changed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for our footwork of that timeline. Now, these others will probably go faster, but we got the hardest one out of the way. So next one up is begin development of the economic development strategy and report to the city council. I believe, Christine, one of these has been-
Yes. So we have an economic development manager who's also in our audience today. So that, that is, that is completed as far as hiring an economic development manager. She's still working through an economic development strategy, because, you know, as we, as we had noted, it's been a challenge to hire for quite some time, for different positions, but this is one of those positions. We can certainly have her provide an update regarding where she's at with the economic development strategy and report that to the city council. As far as better outreach and engagement with businesses in the, in the city, we can provide the update that includes, you know, her efforts as well. Establishment of an economic development department, we don't have the bandwidth or capacity to create a separate department, so this person, department of one, is really just reporting to the city manager's office at this point. So I would say that we're not anywhere, we're not anywhere in the realm of establishing that department, so I would, I would exclude that this time.
Do you think that later on down the road, that, that manager at one point would need an assistant?
At some point, it would be great to have, you know, whether it's an analyst or specialist, et cetera, you know, the bilingual skills would really help, considering we have a lot of businesses that require bilingual skills. Somewhere down the line, yes, but I would say right now, she's using the staff members that we have, whether it's our senior analyst to help with support, or, you know, our admin assistant Lynn to help with translation, et cetera, just maneuvering through that. But yes, sometime, at some point, it'd be ideal.
I, I think that this is important for us to take this item as the next priority, because I know that for the last couple of years, we concentrate on infrastructure already, so this is, this is a time that we need to look into economic development, and we need to put some time into it to get the city moving forward. Because if we look around the city around us, you know, they are very much on top of that, and we are kind of behind, and I think it's, it's the time for us to go ahead and speed up on that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely agree. You know, we're really excited in the small amount of time that we've, you know, bringing on our second senior management analyst, and of course, our economic development manager as well. We've just, we're starting to engage in the community in a different, you know, at a different level. We're really proud, back in February, we had our, our little small business expo that you were a part of, and, and many of you were able to come by and attend, and just reaching out to our small business community, and we're just still building on that momentum. You know, we had a couple of business grants, et cetera. But our economic development manager is also going through and, you know, meeting with new business owners as well as existing business owners, see where she can assist. Those are things that we can certainly share with the council, now that we've had one on board for, you know, for about five months or so. But I'd say as far as beginning development of an economic development strategy, let's change that to updating the council on, updating the council on the economic development strategy, which includes those, you know, better outreach and update the council on the economic development strategy, including outreach efforts and engagement with the business in the city.
I see, I see, you said another example.
Absolutely, we're excited for that. So we'll delete those two lines, establishment, economic development department, hire an economic development manager. The partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, we've, we're maintaining that as, you know, the chamber's been, you know, the chamber's been active and communicating with the city in terms of some of the events that they're holding, and how we can, you know, how we can work together to, to elevate our small business community. So I think sustaining the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, it would be status of the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and just other small business efforts. But that's what we can update the council on, and I would say first meeting in June is reasonable, especially as you're thinking about the budget.
Thank you, Christine. All right. Any questions with that objective team?
No.
Okay, let's turn our attention to the next one here, which is research the establishment of Business Improvement District and present a report to the city council. Actually, Christine, my first question would be, is, is this now the economic development manager working with you on that, or does that still require a consultant?
It would, it would still be, so I think this is where, if there's an interest on a business improvement district, I think the initial report that needs to be presented to the council is what does a BID or what does a BIA look like? You know, potential locations and where the council would be interested in creating those boundaries, and then what that process, what that outreach, public hearing, you know, what those processes would look like. I think for, for this particular item, it would be working with the economic development manager. We're not at the consultant level yet at one, if, if we do advance the efforts, then we would be looking at a consultant to help with the, you know, the outreach efforts and fiscal analyses, et cetera.
Okay.
Isn't this one of the, it's belonged to one of the goal that we have in the four goals that we have, yeah, for the Little Saigon District and also the Dautau District?
So, yes, so the, the, as part of the Little Saigon blueprint that, that was created a few years back during COVID, actually. one of the ideas came about was establishing a business improvement, a district. And essentially, what that district does is it assesses, it creates a tax assessment for those businesses within the district. And those funds are essentially used to, you know, they could be used to do things like, I don't know, wayfinding signs or marketing, you know, marketing efforts for that particular district, whatever those businesses are in that. The thought of a BIA has been floated around for a long time. And it was part of the previous, you know, it's been brought up. But I think it really, you know, it's a touchy area. And so moving along the process has been a little bit challenging as far as the appetite for businesses to be a part of this. But we can certainly bring, you know, bring the item to let you know how the process works, et cetera. And maybe at that point, if you decide that this is something you want to explore, then we move forward to the next objective, which is to hire a consultant to help with the outreach, to help with, you know, engaging the businesses. Where would this district, you know, where's the interest? Where would you have this district drawn? Is it the Little Saigon area? Or is it really businesses along Westminster Boulevard? Or is it a combination of both? Is it, you know, how do you want to establish that?
And I think, Christine, you asked an important question of council, which is one I would ask, too, which is, has this remained an objective you're interested in pursuing still, given the notation she made about the work involved?
I think so, sorry.
It is.
Okay, I'm hearing no waiver from it. So we're on board. So now, Christine, you have some thoughts on timeline to report to the city council on efforts with this?
I would probably say reasonably on that one, since everything else is earlier. Probably August on that one.
Okay.
First meeting in August? Or maybe second meeting in August? I'll see second meeting in August.
All right. Put this economic development manager to work. Let's turn our attention to the next one, which is establish a policy to set priorities on the expenditure of new tax revenues, working with the finance department to take into account existing needs. You are, I will just observe, you're in the middle of a budgeting process, so you must have some sense of how you set a priority for that. But I'll let you comment further.
I'll actually let my finance director comment.
Oh, great, well, please, come use a microphone, finance director.
She probably keeps the microphone for this whole item, but. You can stay seated there if you want to just do it from there. Yeah.
Well, again, I think the priorities are part of the budget process. And that's when the council allocates the funds. But if it's a standalone item, we can do it as part of that or we can do it as a separate meeting at a later time. Kind of either way, that would be fine. We could do it in June, we could do it as part of the study session in May.
So I'm hearing May or June.
I'd say part of the study session makes most sense.
That makes sense.
Yes, it's May 14.
This is the May 2025 study session?
It's the only study session so far. Yeah, it's the May 14, 2025 study session before the regular meeting.
Great. All right, let's go to the last objective we identified here, which is address fiscal impact to the city of cash businesses, not accurately remitting sales taxes and explore audit options to address the issue. So I think partly you're, I'm looking to affirm the consensus on this, that this is an issue out of fairness and transparency that the council would like to ask the city manager to explore and address in the community.
I think so, but is this something that we can accomplish?
So it's interesting what we've done over the last few years to try to engage. So the, are there businesses, are there cash businesses not accurately remitting sales taxes? And the answer to that is yes. You know, we do get reports, we do get quarterly reports on sales tax activity, which obviously confidential, we can't divulge what those numbers look like. But the answer to that in generics is yes. The, what we've done in the last few years is we've engaged with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which has, you know, we've worked with them in terms of going out to do their version of outreach, if you will, and found that some businesses were less than cooperative. So really, it's interesting that, you know, we have the burden of these businesses being in our city that are not paying their share. But at the same time, we don't have jurisdiction over their revenues. And so that creates, that creates a, you know, a difficulty for us. So we've engaged, you know, we've engaged with the other agency, with the, you know, the authority to do it, to go in and try to encourage, et cetera. But it's been challenging. Erin, can you talk a little bit about that?
It has been challenging. I've worked with them, I've talked to them. But pretty much where they left it is if we want to bring the evidence to them and provide them with the name of a business, a receipt proving that they're not collecting the tax, at that point, they might get involved. But other than that, they're not willing to get involved and they don't give us the outcome of their research either. So if they go to businesses and look, we don't get the information. It's not our, it's not information that they'll give us. So we've talked to them, I've had them, I've requested them to look into collections in the city. But the last conversation I had, and I've actually reached out several times since and they don't return my call, but the last conversation was if we want to provide names and proof, then they would go out and look at it.
Sounds like a lot of work and then just hope for the best. Just here's this and then we don't know.
Yeah, and I'm aware of a couple audits that they've done, but they don't even give us the reports afterwards. They won't give us the name of the businesses that they've looked at. They don't really give us anything. So as far as our hands are pretty much tied. If we have businesses that we know of, we could certainly submit them. But even then, like I've said, I've reached out to the gentleman I worked with a few times and he hasn't returned my calls or my emails.
Yeah, once upon a time, it used to be the State Board of Equalization, which actually had, you know, electeds that were, you know, that were a part of the state board, and they were the ones that enforced. Because of the nature of, you know, the political nature of having electeds on, you know, on the Board of Equalization, the California Department of Tax Fee Administration was then branched off. There are no electeds that are part of that enforcement. Just imagine it's like the FPPC for, you know, it's like the FPPC, this is an enforcement arm for, you know, for sales and use tax. The challenge that we have is, you know, we get treated as a city like any other, like anybody else making a complaint, et cetera. And so we're not getting any special privileges to help fix some of these problems with them. It is a lot of calls that are not being returned. It is a lot of, you know, just a very haphazard way of trying to, you know, resolve the problem. In the city standpoint, we've done the best we could as far as putting out this narrative that sales tax revenues, that, you know, when you're paying into your taxes, you're essentially helping to pay for the officers that show up. Yeah, the officers that show up to your business because someone, you know, did a smash and grab or, you know, grabbed your purse or whatever down, you know, as you're walking to the store. Like those are, it's those types of things that the taxes pay for. It's also just very challenging to put that out there and then expecting that people are going to pay, you know, pay for these services. So we've tried the best that we could. It's just hard because we are not the enforcement arm of people's sales tax revenues.
That's the thing that I want to outline. We want to come up with a timeframe. But at the same time, I know that staff helped and then put effort into that a lot already. And it looked like that we didn't get anything out of that. I would like to have, you know, to have the last push on that to make sure that we have, we get the answer out of them. If not, then there's no point that we, you know, continue to push for it because it's not in our jurisdiction, so we can't do anything about it. So why don't we put the number one priority on that to get it done as soon as possible?
I mean, we can, we can come back to council and provide some alternative ways of outreach. I think what it boils down to for us as staff is going out there and whether it's explaining where your, you know, your taxes go to as far as services go, whether it's, you know, if we have to decide we're going to do a couple of town hall meetings or pop up tents down in certain business areas, we can certainly do that. But as far as forcing people to pay, that's where we get stuck and that's where we've got to rely on the state to do that. But I think for us, we can certainly do outreach if that's this council's desire. We can do outreach, we can provide information, maybe create, you know, three language flyers that can be mailed. And we'll take a look at what those look like, if that's the council's desire. We can present an item with some of these different ideas.
What is that outreach will do for us? And let's say that we get the result and are we going to send it to the state for them to?
I mean.
You know, we spend money here, right? We spend money, we get people together and then we got the result and we are doing nothing with the result or we have no control over that. Then what good does it do for us?
And you're right, that's, and that's just part of the, that's part of the challenge. You know, we'll put money into something, we don't know if it's going to actually yield results or how many results, you know, that would, how much of that would actually result in anything. And we could, again, as part of that, we can sit down in front of, you know, we can try to sit down in front of state legislators. We can try to, you know, facilitate some of these appointments and, you know, as part of the, you know, reaching out to the legislative bodies to figure out if there's anything that can be done. We can go as far as that goes.
Yeah, I think we got to do something and, you know, whatever we can do, you know, we have to try. And at the same time, if there's something is like red flag, it's obvious, then that's something that we can report it and just hope for the best.
Well, maybe can we go back to that item, the back on that screen? Because right now, it basically just says, it says, assess fiscal impact to city of cash business not accurately remitting sales taxes and explore audit options to address the issue. So we can, I mean, we can provide, we can provide financial information to really show what the impacts look like. That's something we can certainly do. We can provide a couple of different options. And give some direction points as far as things that we can do as a city. I would probably say, maybe this is one we also do second meeting in June. Or is that a little bit rushed, maybe?
That might be a bit rushed. I'm trying to think of, it's hard to provide the financial information because it would be on a comparison basis. But because finance or sales tax information is hard to report, I'll work with HDL to see if we can get some comparisons to other. I mean, I know that there's a publication that lists different shopping centers in Orange County. And I know we're listed in that, so I can provide that information. That's already done. So I can provide information. But as far as exploring audit options and those, I'm not quite sure that could be done that quickly.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that we can really explore audit options because we just don't have the, I would say, we'd have to remove the audit options to address the issue. Because we just can't, and we can't enforce, we don't have the data, we don't.
We can't.
We don't have the access to that.
They don't respond and we don't have the ability to do that. I mean, as far as, when I speak to them, they said they did audit. So, I mean, that's the answer, is they already did it.
But they did it and we didn't. So it's.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I would say based on what the fiscal impact looks like and when we present the item to the council, you know, maybe that's, that's a time where council can decide, maybe you, you know, you establish, you have two council members that work with staff and we go on a mission to the state and talk to them about impacts or whatever it is, right, based on the data. But we'll leave that as a decision point once we present this assessment. Go from there.
You may very well discover it's $50,000, in which case you have a fundamental policy question of like, how much are you going to expend trying to get after $50,000, even if it's a question of fairness? On the other hand, it may be $500,000, in which case, that's a different question.
I think we're missing a few zeros based on some estimates, to be honest.
It's a lot more than that.
I guess that can be helpful if we get more information so we can get together with the state legislators so that we can sell their ideas and get the information, pick their minds and what we can do in order to get to the end result.
And I appreciate Christine's suggested edit, that we drop the bit about audit and let's just stick with focusing on the fiscal, actual fiscal impact and estimated fiscal impact.
Can we add on their ideas of, you know, education to the business community?
We can, yeah, we'll include that. We can include that. That'll be part of the decision-making point for the council. We'll include that.
Does that work?
And then deadline on that one?
Say September?
Yeah, probably on the, as, on the public education options, I can certainly include some of the, I can try to include some of the fiscal impact in May with the budget. But I'll see what I can get. I, maybe put a later date just in case we can't meet that.
Yeah. Well, we just put September for the time being. But I think some of that discussion can be built in to the budget.
Okay, very good. So this is a reminder, a consensus of the items and elements that were elevated to me in the course of our conversations. I don't want anybody to feel like you're being directed, too directed here. But if you, I feel like we have pretty good objectives. Are there any other objectives or something you need to raise or question you'd ask?
Can you scroll down? I wanted to see where we are, where we left off.
So this is the last of the objectives in this particular goal area? And then we're on to the next here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I had Abby blow it up big for eyeballs, but we can make it smaller so you can see it all.
Okay, I'm fine.
Don't forget, we'll take this to the next council meeting to confirm all of these as well. So what you're seeing right now is a draft.
Correct.
Technically, a draft.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to goal area number two, which is implement and support effective land use policies that encourage quality development. I will not read these individually and I suspect we'll turn to our assistant city manager since he is across the board identified as the who on these various items. As you'll see, there are two in this yellowish color at the bottom. That color signifies that they, that we're looking for some additional maybe clarification or discussion. We can get some guidance from city staff on how to beef the what up there a little bit to give you a sense of what we could come back and report. So do you have any questions you'd like to, or comments you'd like to make on any of these objectives?
Sure, I think for.
Before we get into them?
Just for the benefit of everybody, we'll go ahead and read through them. The first one was provide the city council with an update on the city's recently approved zoning one, phase one study and a study of the city's ongoing zoning phase two study, including an overview of the project's schedule. We are moving forward with one of those components that has been completed, which is the zoning phase one. That was brought to council. So really, I think the focus would be to modify and to bring, to complete the zone phase two study, including an overview of the project's schedule. We are actively working with our community development department. As you know, it's been infused with some recent good talent in the form of a principal planner that has joined us. He's been here for a little bit over six months now. So we are, and we also have a consultant in-house staff member that's also been working very closely with also our interim community development director, Sherri, who's here tonight as well. So with that staff augmentation, we are moving towards completing the zoning phase two study. Amanda Troppiano, who's very familiar to the city for the good work that she's done going back to the 2016 general plan update. done, going back to the 2016 general plan update when she was with the previous company, continues to work with our staff on that. So we would, this one would, as far as providing you with an update, we can bring you an
I feel like you just did.
Well, a little bit more detail, I'm not the exact.
What about a date on the completion of phase two?
We can, I, I don't have that information to provide, but we can definitely bring, for the benefit of, we do have a new council member, council member Mark Nguyen, I think for the benefit of this council, we would be happy to come back with an update within a few months to let you know what, what the status is on all of, on this good effort. I don't have the council meetings memorized or committed to memory like our city manager does, so I would need some help in, if I say a few months from now, I would need some help fine tuning, getting, getting me to an answer on what meeting date that would be.
So we're thinking sometime in October or no, September, October?
I think for, for the benefit of the new council, I think it would be good to have us come up and provide an update on that a lot sooner, just to give everybody a clear timeline.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Sheri.
Good evening, I'm Sheri Van Nederweis, in the interim community development director. We'd be happy to give you that update in June.
Look at that, bang.
There we go. And then also too, can you include that, like the process, like for completing that phase two, just so we know what, you know?
Yeah, to be a thorough update, it'll let you know what staff members are working on the effort, what consultants working on the effort and what the cost of the effort and what the ultimate project schedule is for the effort, that would be part of the detailed update.
So I think our language in here reflects including an overview of the project schedule and I just added end cost in there to reflect that. Okay?
Under who, it's, so we no longer have a planning manager, it's a principal planner?
Correct, thank you for that.
And I'm actually really hoping that our assistant city manager doesn't have to be working on these, but I think he will.
We'll transition over, over the next couple of years, we'll transition back over to, you'll probably see all community development staff that'll be leading the charge on these.
Great. So second objective that was, any questions on this first objective, we can move on? Okay. Next one up is provide to the city council a bus tour of the areas in Orange County and or Southern California that have been redeveloped to successful mixed-use projects.
Yeah, I mean, we're ready to do that within the next couple of months, really depending on the availability of our council. We do think it is very beneficial to do so, back when we were working on the 2016 general plan update, getting stakeholders and committee members out to actual locations to walk the type of projects that are, that, that are envisioned for, for our intensified corridors within the city was very beneficial to that group. So it really, it's something we can do within the next couple of months, depending on council availability, I would say definitely before the summer month so that we could get everybody, it'll probably happen, it'll be the same tour provided twice, right, to kind of break up the, the council majorities.
As, as the, yeah, as the ACM had mentioned, the intent of this was really to have this bus tour leading up to our changes to zoning as far as allowing mixed use, you know, we allow mixed use now, and so this is more for, this is more for perspective, so it's certainly the desire of the, if the council still wishes to have this tour to look at some of the newer projects, to, you know, draw some inspiration, we can certainly do that, but the original intent is no longer, you know, it, the, the original intent is no longer there, but certainly we can, we can provide an opportunity for the city council to see some of the successful mixed-use projects that have since developed.
I'm sure, I'm sure each one of us have a chance to go around and take a look at different areas already, but I think it's beneficial for the city council to, to take a tours.
Okay.
In this area and we have number of reports that, that you are going to do in June and, you know, it better for us to see and, and, you know, well thought about these before you guys update us with, with the information, then we can digest the information when, when we get the update and get ready to make decisions right there.
Right, you have context.
Yeah, the, the original plan, we were looking at three different properties at the time and it was going to be on a, I believe it was on a Saturday and we were all going to get together on the wild bus and, and, and take that trip.
What about June timeframe?
So, yeah, so it, we, I mean, we can certainly, I can certainly have staff take a look at your schedules to see what we can, you know, we can do in May or June. We do have a couple of locations that we can take you to. If, if it is easier for some of these developers to have the council go as a whole, we can certainly notice that as a special meeting and that won't be a problem, so that all five of you can go at the same time and we will gladly provide that transportation. Yeah, it looks like you're, but it looks like you're still interested in doing it, so we can certainly.
Yeah, I think it'll be beneficial, I mean, for those who are not able to go, you know, on their own and know what, know what they're looking at when they're there.
Yeah, there's been, it's quite a bit, well, there's intensification and that's the whole purpose of mixed use, but the products that are being delivered to different areas of Orange County, they vary tremendously with your traditional horizontal mixed use, vertical mixed use, product types, so I think it would be a good idea to, to put eyes on these topics that are getting thrown around so often.
And it sounds like we have council consensus still to pursue this objective, I'm not hearing anybody say they want to pull out and it sounds like it's as much, the who here is as much prep city staff as it is council on just setting your schedules together and make this happen. So, but May-June sounds like, is I think what I just heard Christine say, that sounds like a reasonable timeline?
Sure.
Nobody's planning a 14-week vacation to Europe that we need to know about? Okay. So we'll look for May-June and I assume that the principal planner will be involved again?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Next up is complete the citywide economic development study and initiate general plan amendments throughout the city. Adolfo, you want to provide a status on this?
Sure. We did bring to the city council an economic development study that looked at opportunity areas throughout the city and we received feedback from the council regarding moving forward with intensifying and in some cases, changing the shape of these areas, expanding them, carving out additional space for this type of intensification mainly along major corridors throughout the city and obviously without any impact to current residential establishments throughout the communities. As, as part of the economic development study, there was the big chunk of it that was presented to the council, the next, the next focus really is internal processes to go ahead and update the general plan to facilitate the type of intensification. And can I, can I have you talk a little bit about the EIR process that goes along with the, just the general plan update amendment?
We have actually started the EIR process for that intensification because that is the lengthiest part of the, the process and we have just received proposals from consultants to do the zone change update and the general plan update, so we will be in a position to be able to select a consultant and give you information on the schedule very shortly. But the EIR work is, is currently underway so that we can hopefully minimize the amount of time that it's going to take once we get our, our land use consultants on board.
So do you kind of have a guesstimate timeline for that?
I haven't seen the proposals yet from the consultants, they just came in on Friday, so as soon as I've had a chance to review those, I'd be happy to let the council know when we select our consultant and what the schedule's going to be.
Okay.
I do have a question for our assistant city manager. Yeah, I know, I understand that this is a strategic planning workshop and we're looking into the future, right? And I understand that, you know, from the top of the slides, implement and support effective land use policies and also the item that we are talking about right now is a general plan, initiate general plan amendments. Help me to understand, I know that sometimes ago that we have the Pacific Plan for the economic development for the civic center, how is it fall into this or should we look into that or we have to be, it has to be a separate item that we have to talk later on or?
I think the best place to discuss that particular topic would be on the next item.
Okay.
Which specifically focuses on the actual mixed-use districts.
Okay.
And we could talk a little bit more about, that, that leads us to the same question that the, that the vice mayor asked about, is where we are on the rankings, what other, what other specific plans exist in the city that we could do that on the next.
Okay.
But we won't leave this, this page until we address that issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Adolfo, just so I'm clear, it sounds like we have completed the citywide economic development study, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just paused for a second, note, as we're going through this process of updating you, we are also knocking off objectives that were partially achieved, so we'll be, we'll strike through on that particular item and it sounds like the big, as they say, the long pole in the tent right now is the EIR report in terms of advancing the general plan or initiating the general plan amendment update. So I've tried to craft this into, provide an update on the status of that EIR and the timeline to deliver on this project, does that seem like a reasonable thing to get done? Council, does that also, so we can provide you with an update, once we have a sense of the EIR timelines, we've selected a contractor, things of that, and we've initiated the EIR? And then my only other follow-on question is, my only follow-on question for Adolfo is kind of timeline, we could, when can we report back to council on the status of the EIR and timeline process on that?
Since we are in the process of, of receiving and reviewing the proposals from, from the consultant world, what do you think Sheri, as far as being able to come back with an update?
I'd like to do that.
I would say early June. The beauty of the, I mean, this is something that our staff is really good at, but as part of the proposal process, it's an opportunity for the, for the private sector to essentially share their experience on, to deliver these types of projects, an opportunity for staff to learn and possibly refine the scope even prior to council award, so I would say in June, we would come back and let you know what our original proposal was, what the, sorry, what our RFP was, what the proposals look like, who were, who, what the refined scope looks like and then what the timeline looks like. And we would do that in early June and then quickly come back for an award through the normal city process for awarding that work to, to a particular consultant.
Okay, so to be clear, then the award would actually happen after June?
It would happen after June.
Okay, very good. I think I captured this accurately, council, any questions on this objective?
No.
No? Okay, excellent. Next up is provide the city council with an update on the general plan implementation strategies related to the city's mixed-use districts, specifically the recently approved district two mixed-use downtown, east to Golden West to Hoover. All right, Mary, I believe you were just asking some questions about this one, so I'll let Adolfo take the floor.
Right, so again with this one, provide the city council with an update on the general plan implementation strategies related to the city's mixed-use districts, specifically the recently approved district two mixed-use downtown, which is the east Golden West to Hoover. So one of the things that we learned through the economic development study was that it was in the city's best interest to take a, to take a step back and look at the entire city and look at the economic development opportunities for the whole city rather than dig in completely into a specific plan for, for, for one of the mixed-use districts. So that is what we went ahead and, and did. As a result of that, the work that was discussed previously, which involves some EIR work to intensify the districts throughout the city, needs to take place in early June, we'll let you know what that timeline exactly looks like, but it's, it's an EIR, as you, as you can imagine, back in 2016, those of you who are on the council or planning commissioners at the time, remember that that is a lengthy process and for that reason, it, it really does put a hold on, on some of the particular focus of the, of the mixed-use downtown district because we're waiting to see what the rest of the intensification for the city looks like from a, just from a policies and procedure standpoint, going through the general plan amendment process.
Question.
I know where you're going, just go for it.
No, go ahead.
No, no, go.
No, I don't know, it's just, I was just, just popped in my head right now, you know how 2016, there was an EIR done for the general plan update? How long is that, how long is the EIR valid for, for that particular?
Let's just say it's valid for quite some time, but when you make major general plan, major land use and zoning changes, it requires that to be updated.
How often?
We only have to update it when we're proposing land use changes, since we're proposing intensification, there's additional air quality impacts, additional traffic impacts, noise impacts, so those all have to be analyzed.
Okay. Triggers the major analysis.
Okay. And then just a clarification, when, when we say recently adopted district two mixed use, can you make sure we explain that that is not like, what do you call it, like elected district two is, remember we, we broke it, there was a different breakdown of why certain areas were called a particular numbered district?
Correct.
Can you explain that so we, to make sure?
Yes, for the benefit of everyone, before we had districts in the city, the general plan update of 2016 identified mixed-use districts throughout the city, which essentially carved out opportunity areas throughout the city. For example, the mall itself is a district by itself, doesn't necessarily mean that that is district one, it is, it is district one as listed in 2016. So there, there are some nuances that we need to adopt moving forward based on the fact that we are now a city with districts, voting districts.
I have to run the term general plan to precede the word district there to bring clarity to that point, thank you.
Because I think there was some confusion and I got, and I got this question asked before by certain residents, they're like, well, this is, you're, I don't know, it's not, you know, we have district boundaries for elected up here, but it's not, and try to explain to them that it's not an elected district, it's mixed use, mixed use zone district.
Yes, the term district has forever been changed in the city of Westminster.
Yes, yes. I don't know if there's something that we should change that, just to avoid confusion or?
Well, we can't change the general plan as far as the text that goes, we're going to definitely do a better job of, in our, moving forward with our explanations to be able to highlight it, really by name, I think, more than anything at this point, because these are very defined areas throughout the city, so instead of mixed-use district one, well, Westminster Mall is, is what we should be referring it to, I think moving forward, we'll, we'll focus on, we'll focus on the names that were identified and refined by the council.
So I, I need a little clarity, so what exactly is our next step here, is it to provide this more general update to the council?
Well, and I think I'll open to your suggestion, Ryder, because of the citywide effort that's going on, it, it is, it does put a bit of a pause on some of the specific plans that are, that are slated to move forward throughout the city. So I, I don't know what, how comfortable we feel about putting a timeline in, I know the, the goal today is to put a timeline on it.
Well, certainly it's going to come after June and since we don't really know the timeline after June, it seems a little more difficult, but what would be the outside edge of some estimate, would it be June of 2026? We'll asterisk it with a giant.
Probably, I think we're comfortable with that. We don't want to over commit, definitely, I know when we start talking about years, it tends to make everybody feel like the year can become two years, but an EIR is,
It's a substantial piece of work.
And it is realistically a year-long process.
Theoretically, we'll have a better understanding of that once we complete the June 2025 update and we get through the EIR, RFP process. Okay?
You put that, put on their by, instead of, instead of June, just June 2026?
You want by? It's implied, it's implied.
Well, I would put by, I, I, I don't disagree, I would put by.
You say we have till June 2026 to get this done. Did you get it done earlier? Great.
Bring it earlier, right.
Okay, and then we'll move to the final objective, that's a carryover, which is deliver a scope of work for the recommended general plan, district two mixed-use development specific plan, downtown specific plan. That includes strategies for already identified goals of the general plan. That's a mouthful.
It is, it is, and that's, that's, that's a whole effort by itself, that would begin after June of 26. It would really look at essentially putting out an RFP, finding the right consultant to move forward with a specific plan for that district. And this is Mayor, you brought up the discussion of the civic center, right? So when we identified this specific plan as the top priority for the city, we did also prioritize every other, we're not going to call them districts anymore, but all, every other specific plan in the, in the city and they are ranked. And they are ranked, we brought that to council several times, I don't have that information with me now, but civic center development is something that I've heard from the Vice Mayor, back when you were Planning Commissioner, and I know, Mayor, you have an interest in that as well. This would be the moment to introduce discussion on that, from your side.
All right. My understanding is that when you say that specific plans already identified in the general plan for the civic center is already identified in the general plan, right? My understanding?
It's identified as a specific plan area, a mixed-use district within the city, where the next logical step would be to build out a specific plan for each of these locations. And Sherri can probably talk a little bit more intelligently on this than I can, but I know you can't, it's very costly, and it can be also confusing for a community, even if we had the money, to say, let's just build out specific plans for every district in the city. What outreach effort are you coming to? It creates issues, right? So Sherri, I think you talked a little bit more about if the mayor's interest is in running two specific plans, what that would look like.
Yeah, I think we'd want to understand what goals you're trying to achieve, because we don't necessarily have to have a specific plan unless you're looking at making some significant land use changes in the area. Because a specific plan is useful when you're looking at making infrastructure changes and other significant changes.
Sherri, I'm so sorry. Mayor, we lost a quorum.
Oh.
All right.
Take a break.
Well, let's take five minutes break and be back here at 6:55. The time now is 6:59. We are getting back from the recess. Local, please.
Thank you. Mayor Nguyen?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
I'm here.
District 1, Councilwoman Fan West?
Fan West here.
District 3, Councilmember Wayne?
Here.
District 4, Councilmember Wayne. Mayor, you have a quorum with District 4. Councilmember Wayne absent.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you go back to the previous slide?
I can, Mayor, and thank you for calling in recess. Actually, it gave staff and I an opportunity to connect on a couple of points, because there's a lot of language going on here. And some of the language actually assumes that a specific plan is the best plan possible or the only policy route. And as we were discussing, that's actually a decision council may want to make with some additional information that will result from some of the study work that is going on here. So my advice would be on these objectives, if we want to put those on the screen, that where we discuss, so we have this first objective, we've already identified where we struck through. So it's this objective right here, this one, we're going to keep that. But then my suggestion would be is down here, we say we provide an update to the city council with an update on the general plan implementation strategies related to the city's mixed-use downtown districts, specifically the recently approved district, and evaluate policy options including a specific plan for the district. And we leave it open for you to make a kind of go-no-go decision, a women on a specific plan is the best option, based upon the expert advice of land use planners in the room. That would actually probably be the best time possible. And that would also then actually probably have us eliminate this other objective, because until we know, until you have the information to make the call on that, we probably wouldn't proceed to the next objective.
I have a question on that one. I thought we already, we already established that during our other specific plans, excuse me, strategic plans. So we already had established that there was three areas where we wanted to proceed with the specific plan.
We have, we have the priority list from the council, and at the time, we had identified that the city was going to move forward with one of those districts, with the downtown being the priority district. Prior to moving forward with any land use changes to just that district, with the city's focus on economic development, our trips to ICSC Las Vegas, we came back and really identified, actually prior to the trip really, but then really solidified during the trip, it became very clear that instead of going full throttle into a specific plan for that priority district, that we need to take a step back and look at opportunities throughout the city, based on what was decided in 2016. We're a decade later, the landscape of the county has changed tremendously, our neighboring cities have changed tremendously. So it really focused us on more of a citywide approach. This doesn't change the fact that the downtown is still the top priority. I know the mayor brought up the civic center, so that's still in play as part of the ongoing discussion. But in sitting with Sherri, she has been a great wealth of knowledge to the city, and she has shared with us some success stories for iconic areas that she's worked on in Orange County that went a different route than the specific plan route. And all we're saying is, when we get to this point in June of 2026, it may be a specific plan, it may be something else, based on what the council needs, and that in itself will be further discussions prior to making that leap.
Can you have an example of what that other route would be?
Absolutely. Maybe you're familiar with the Platinum Triangle in Anaheim. I was in the city of Anaheim when the city council first had that vision, and they thought that they were going to do a specific plan. But as they articulated their vision for the Platinum Triangle, it became obvious that a specific plan would not allow them to achieve that vision. And part of that was because they did not want to create non-conforming land uses, and it was impossible to do that with a specific plan. So we ended up going with traditional zoning and an overlay zone. So it was basically trying to find the best tools to implement the city council's vision. So that's why we're trying to keep the doors open here. So it may be that a specific plan will be the best tool, but once you've seen the results of the citywide zoning, it may be that a mixed-use zone is adequate to be able to implement your vision for these different areas. And if it's not, you still have the opportunity to direct staff to do a specific plan.
If you recall, the intensification of any of these districts was going to be done through the specific plan, and instead, we're doing it citywide prior to jumping into one.
Going back to your suggestion earlier and your question, I don't want to create any more than we already have. I don't want to create any more works, but at the same time, I would like to see if we can implement the vision that we have, you know, for the civic center redevelopment into this, because I know that we specifically mentioned that this is District 2 mixed-use downtown, but now I think the civic center is now District 3. Should we, I don't know, I'm asking a question here. Should we include a vision that, or the plan to have the civic center redevelopment here in this goal?
So for this one, the way it reads, right, so let's work through it, because I think we just made some changes to it. So provide the city council with an update on the general plan and implementation strategies related to the mixed-use districts, specifically the recently approved general plan. We'll just call it mixed-use downtown, and evaluate policies including a specific plan for the mixed-use downtown. If, Ryder, would you say that it is, this is an opportunity, I'm hearing from the mayor, to potentially have two priorities, one of them being the downtown district, and another one being the civic center district, to run concurrently?
I think that's what I'm hearing, too.
That's what I'm hearing.
There's consensus on council to make those equal priorities and what the complication is, or additional intensification is for work on the part of city staff.
What we had as far as a priority was, we need to get rid of the district.
We'll clean that up.
Let's get rid of that.
Well, let's get rid of districts throughout, and let's just name them. We'll stick to the name that the council agreed. So for this particular one, it was mixed-use downtown.
Mixed-use downtown, yeah. And then keep the east, Golden West to Hoover, just that specific stretch.
Just that segment.
Yeah. And then the other one was Little Saigon, and there was one other one, what was?
Well, there's a bunch. They're all listed and they're all ranked.
But at priority, we had identified three priorities.
I mean, I can go over, so, original priority rankings, we had the mixed-use Westminster Boulevard slash downtown, which is the eastern portion. Then we had the mixed-use for Little Saigon. We had Westminster Boulevard slash downtown western portion, mixed-use corridor, which, mixed-use, yeah, it's just a mixed-use corridor. Then we had mixed-use civic center, and then mixed-use northwest.
Okay. Yeah. And that third one was the Westminster Boulevard east, excuse me, west, because of that mixed-use area that was slated as a downtown.
Yeah, it was located along Westminster Boulevard between Willow and Golden West, this west portion of District 2, the general plan District 2, focused on high commercial retail presence.
And, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, that was also one area that was identified as, that we identified as ICSC, as a potential project. Am I wrong?
No, that's correct.
So to me, those are the areas that we should continue to focus on. Those are, and I'm pretty sure that that area is a sought-out target area of different developers, from what I've been hearing, so.
I mean, if it would help the council, we could come back with an overview of all of the mixed-use districts. It doesn't change anything that we're It doesn't change anything that we're doing right now. It just gives us an opportunity to essentially, to present to this council an overview of every district that exists in our general plan. And it could open it up for discussion. Because right now, we're hearing a list that's being read by the city manager and...
Yeah. Yeah, because I remember when we spoke about this pretty intensely, about the priority areas.
So Mr. Mayor, Christine, I just want to verify. So the west side downtown is off of Westminster and Springdale area or more toward the middle?
So the western portion, it's along Westminster between Willow and Golden West. So west of Golden West.
Okay.
That's the western portion.
So from the list that you read earlier, is that according to priority that we set before?
So the priority rankings, this is what was presented at the time. And I have to go to another page to show what the priority ranking...
And how long ago was it? Was it about two years ago?
Oh, it was originally provided, the first iteration was in 2022. But we had brought this out a couple of times, a few more times. Just trying to go through different pages.
My suggestion is I agree with the assistant city manager. Why don't you look into that and then, you know, give us an update on that?
We can do that. It's quite complicated. Going back to 2016, they were just, I would just say probably top left to right on a map listed in order, right? I don't think there was a rhyme or reason. And if they ended up on a list, it was just because somebody needed to go first, somebody needed to go last. And they were a particular size, right? And then when we brought it to the council, we looked at, based on some of the input from our planners and our other land use experts, they said, yeah, it's kind of too big of a chunk. It's too big of a task to take on. It's very different. Let's break it up here. So that's how we ended up creating, actually, I would just say, breaking up the districts and expanding the list because now we had a large district that became two. And as part of that, we came up with a final segment list, for lack of a better term, and then the council ranked them. And just that journey has been about a two-and-a-half-year journey. And now that we're looking at intensifying areas and expanding areas, I think it would be a good time to bring everything back and say, okay, here are the expanded areas. Here's what we're calling them. We'll clean up all the naming. And then we could re-rank them if the council chooses.
All right. Thank you.
So I think actually what I'm hearing, I was going to say, what I'm hearing is like there was a discussion being had about elevating the civic plan as part of the being on part and move forward. You just made a critical point, which is there's a lot of work happening right now, which is a precursor to any of these specific plans actually coming to life. And perhaps the more important thing is to come back and revisit an update of the council on the specific plans that are envisioned and the prioritization of those in case there's a healthy council discussion, reprioritizing where Civic Center is. Because that doesn't sound like it was on a top, at the top of the list.
No, it wasn't. No.
So that's what I've heard. Anybody disagree with what I just stated? And should we modify the objective to actually be, come back and provide a thorough report back on specific plans, status of those specific plans, the history? It's really helpful to have a staff member here who can provide that history. By the way, that context is immediate, is super important. So...
I think that since Sherry mentioned that, you know, once council, we establish what our priority is, maybe a specific plan may not be the way to go. So you need to reword that to say, state that, that maybe over what is the best route to provide...
You want to evaluate the mixed-use zones?
Yeah. Because if a specific plan is not the best vehicle to accomplish what we want to accomplish, then...
One thing to mention is...
I think before we start talking about the delivery method, which is, I think, the last column here, what I see being added here right now, I like where that's going. I look at you, but he's the one typing, Ryder's typing. So yeah, I like where this is going. Right now, we're in the process of an environmental impact study. We're going to come back in 2026 to provide you with an overview of like where all that landed. At the same time, we'll be ready to also provide you with an overview of all of these specific plan areas, mixed-use district areas, excuse me, mixed-use district areas. An opportunity to see what the intensification looks like for you to be able to reprioritize if needed.
I don't know if the term civic center redevelopment is too big for us, but you know, I'm more concerned of the building that we're in right now is unsafe and, you know, it need to be renovated. So, you know, I don't know that we may have to take it into that. Because of that, we may have to pre-prioritize the, you know, the mixed-use. I don't know.
I mean, it's a large site. It expands the entire Civic Center area, and it just depends on what division of the council is for the area. And going back to what Sherry was saying, what delivery method that would look like. But until we intensify like the entire city like we had stated and finish that effort, then I think we'll be able to come back and look at the benefits of reprioritizing if that's what the council chooses to do.
Agree.
So I have just, this is why we like to work in real time to make sure, because we'd like to write it down for specificity. So I've rewritten this to say, provide a report to the city council on the state of specific plan options in the city, the key characteristics of a specific plan, and review feedback from the city council on their priorities for potential specific plan areas and prioritize areas that may be subject to a specific plan. That's a mouthful I appreciate.
I think we're agreeing over here. It should be mixed-use districts.
My apologies. Instead of specific plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
On the state of mixed-use district options in the city, going back to the first line. To the very top there. Yeah, there you go. Staff is good with that, Ryder.
Okay. I think the one thing I want to clarify is when I said characteristics of a specific plan, I was referring to wanting to inform the city council about the trade-offs of specific plans and why you may or may not want to do that, which I assume would be part of that presentation. So I think here I do want to say specific plan, like the characteristics or nature of a specific plan. And then we will, council will provide feedback to staff on that. You will provide of what your priorities are for those areas to help address the characteristics you want to see in those mixed-use districts. And then prioritize or reprioritize potentially which of those areas you want to go after first. Does that seem like a good summary, council?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would be June 2026.
Okay. Bye.
Bye.
All right. I guess we should all just acknowledge that the first one has to happen before that can happen. Okay. And then back to my prior point, I believe that eliminates this particular objective here because now we need to go to this instead.
Correct.
All right. So I'm just going to strike through this for now and we'll move on.
One of the things we'll also bring back, and this is something we'll work with Sherry because her time is limited. We don't get to keep her. But while she's here, we'll also look at, just for the benefit of the council and the community, for a city of our size, once we get a little bit further along in the process, what are the maximum number of outreach efforts that are efficient in the city? We'll look at all of those details to make sure that we're not overwhelming the community. But also, we understand that the council has an appetite for moving forward, not necessarily one item at a time. But we'll kind of fine-tune that to a sweet spot.
Okay. Okay, now two new...
I see. Is this... Can I see this in a...
You need to see more of the screen.
Yeah. If you can reduce the size a little bit.
We can. I'll just note, we were getting, we were concerned because as we get larger or as we zoom out, it gets pixelated and people at home can't quite see the screen. But certainly for purposes of you seeing what we have, we can zoom out.
So we're really focusing on the zooming for the benefit of the public at home that's trying to view. Is that correct, Asher?
Correct. If it's too far out, it's grainy on the broadcasting, so we're zoomed in for the purpose of those at home.
Yeah, we will certainly send the council a copy of this after the fact so you don't need to worry about trying to screenshot it tonight because it is getting small.
Did you see what you need to see, Councilmember Fan?
Oh, it's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two more objective areas. These are very brief compared to the others. So I would ask for some additional context on these. So the first one is a conversation about complete the corridor intensifications, which have already begun. So you want to explain that a little bit and talk about where we're at on that?
That's already discussed above, so we can cross that out.
Okay, great. And then the next one is develop and implement specific plans for the key areas in the city, which we just had a thorough discussion on. I feel like we've actually addressed that in particular because that's going to become a decision to make once we get through this additional pre-work that has to happen. So you haven't taken that option off the table. It just remains, we need some steps done before then. So we're going to take both of these off.
Take those off, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the next area, which is attract, develop, and retain well-qualified staff. Three of these objectives are carrying over, first one being monitor accountability for mandatory staff training and/or professional development through the annual evaluation process for staff. I would welcome any staff comments on this, but in some ways, this is an ongoing and perpetual process, so it doesn't really come to an end. But I'm assuming our HR professional just sat down. Any comments you need to make on this?
So the first item, oh, we just took that off. The first item about the accountability for training, that has actually been housed in all of the departments. So they take care of any training that is sort of unique to them. So that's been ongoing and we've had multiple discussions about it. So I think everybody has a good understanding and is starting, if not has finished this task. And then HR has continued to do all of the higher-level training or the common training like sexual harassment and things like that. We also have increased the number of trainings that are available through outside sources like LCW. And so I feel like if we haven't already accomplished this, we've probably are almost there.
All right. Hey, City Manager, you concur with that point? Are there any questions from council on this?
Yeah, so when this was developed, obviously, there was a lot of, there were different kind of turnovers when it came to, you know, hiring, attracting, developing different staff members. It was just a different time in the last, you know, three years, almost four years that Jody's been here now. It feels like 20 for her. But during that time, we've been able to, again, try to streamline processes that were, that seemed very basic, and we weren't doing them as well. So in the last four years, we've been really just holding different departments accountable, staff accountable for things we've gone through and created different processes that were, that didn't exist before. So I feel like we're pretty much in a maintenance place now that this item doesn't really need to be brought back for any kind of implementation or update. This is really just maintenance of, you know, of HR and the executive team at this point.
I would agree with that point. Otherwise, you'd have a list of 1,000 things on here for all the maintenance you're doing.
Yes. Yes.
With council consent, I'd like to go ahead and, or consensus, I'd like to wipe this off the list and move on.
Yeah, I just had a question on the, when is this annual evaluation? Is that typical or can you do like six-month evaluation?
So we currently do annual evaluations. I'd also like to say that we're at a 95% turn-in rate, so we've really improved that. But yes, we do that once a year. We were actually recently talking about maybe incorporating one at a six-month probationary period or whatever our probationary period is, since we have two different probationary periods at the city. But yes, so currently it's once a year, and I think that's pretty typical.
Once a year is pretty standard. But as, you know, whenever there's any particular opportunity where an employee needs to be evaluated specifically for certain things, we have since then implemented more, you know, more reviews and more more evaluations per se to help, to help the employees, you know, succeed. So we are doing more than just the annual review. There are more check-ins, you know, depending on the, you know, the department and as needed.
Yeah, and I would actually add that just in sitting with department heads, supervisors, we really have changed a culture in having discussions and recapping those discussions. Four years ago, I couldn't sit here and say that I felt that those kinds of conversations were being had on a regular basis. And now I frequently have conversations in which we talk about certain individuals and then I hear them say, and I recapped it in an email, which sounds like something very simple, but that's what helps lead to either building an employee or helping, you know, them to figure out what their next move is. And so I think as a staff, we are definitely moving in the right direction.
Okay. Great. Congratulations on your progress.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move to the next line item here, which is create job bulletins to replace specific class specs, which will be used for recruitment posting.
Yeah, so I think when we originally got this one, it was, there was a little confusion. I think we thought that this was only higher level. And so we were a little slow to start on this one, but we, as new positions become available, we start to change the class spec posting to a job bulletin. We've also recently, with the layoffs with federal government, we feel like there's a real opportunity there. So we're trying to incorporate, you know, some wording to maybe hopefully attract some people that would not have looked at our, you know, some of our postings otherwise, if they weren't out of work, if they, you know, with the government. So as these positions come available, we work on the posting. We try to make them creative. As you can understand, that takes some time. So I would say we're probably, I mean, this is really an ongoing... This would be an ongoing, long-going because if we don't have a position that hasn't been posted in three years, if we don't have any, anybody leave those positions, that's not one that we would focus on. We focus on the ones that come up for recruitment. So...
So, I guess, what I hear you saying is that from your perspective, this is also in kind of that maintenance category? We have a process that's been happening. I'm just, I'm curious, by your estimation, what percentage of bin time has it happened?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. It's kind of hard for me to quantify off the top of my head. I apologize. I would say that probably 20 to 25%. We have about 150 positions, but not 150 positions come up every year. So we may have, in fact, right now, I think we have 30 open positions in the last year. So we most likely have updated 30 positions. So it depends on where we were in this process. I've also had some turnover, so some were posted as a regular class spec. But this is definitely an ongoing, top-of-our-mind practice.
And just to also clarify, the benefit of doing this is easier recruitment process?
Yeah, I mean, if you've ever read a class spec, it's pretty boring. It's long, it's in-depth. Most people don't want to read it. As, you know, the title says, we have a hard time retaining talent. And so we're trying to make a more user-friendly job bulletin so that people can identify more with the positions and the way it's written.
I mean, some of it is very outdated to when the position was first, you know, required. I think requirements on certain positions said must know how to use a typewriter. I haven't used a typewriter in a while, but, you know, but it was certainly important back then.
It'll work when there's a blackout.
Correct.
Jody, on that one, so on each job position, when you say bulletin, is going to say what the job task is? Not just the requirements that you need, but
Yeah.
What, you know, which job is expected of that?
Yeah, so one of the things that one of my analysts is working on is I'm trying to get him to come up with like a catchy first paragraph because I want to sort of grab people. And then instead of putting like three sentences for one task, we try to break it down into smaller bites so that it's more, it's easier to absorb, right? So like instead of something like manage people and a budget and this and that all in one sentence, we will break it apart and just say, manage, you know, a staff of five, manage a budget of $2 million, whatever that would look like. So we just make it more digestible in that way. Because right now, an average like bullet point is like four or five sentences long. And to be honest, I don't think people truly read it. I mean, I don't, I can't say that I've always read them, so...
Yeah, the intent of some of these when they were created is it pretty much tries to be a catch-all. So you could have an admin assistant that works in one department that deals with something, and you have one in another department that deals with completely different things. But instead of having, you know, instead of having the description... But instead of having, you know, instead of having the descriptions really cater to each of those, you just combine it all, right? So all of a sudden, you have someone who is required to work with council but knows how to read engineering plans. Don't know how that works out, but there's a lot of that, you know, that catch-all's existed. So we're cleaning it up as we go along. It's on one of the more lower priority items that we do have because of the fact that we are not hiring all these at the same time. So as, as a position opens and we'll do the cleanup. But, you know, we do have positions that essentially something's been sitting in there for a long time. And until, until, you know, we open that recruitment again, we're not going to do anything with it.
So a question, I don't, tell me, I mean, if I'm, this is where, this would go in, it's like an example of somebody, for example, let me just, my, one of my favorite positions is code enforcement. Would on there, would it describe that position and what is expected? Like they had to have, you know, so many cases and they gotta do, be out there patrolling or, I mean, would that be in there? Is that, or is it different, different, different area?
Yeah, so it's a more scaled-down version when you first look at it, but then we put a link to the actual class spec. What we also do, because I think I'm hearing your question here, is when, when we have people come into our organization, I actually have them sign all of their job descriptions so they can't say that they didn't see it, read it, or, you know, digest it. So whether they do or not, they've signed it. And so there are three points where they can get that information. And then also their departmental onboarding should also provide them with what their job, what their job duties are.
If you're looking for specific data, like how many cases they're supposed to be holding, et cetera, that's not going to be in the job description.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, that's specifically not going to be in the description because as the position evolves, what you don't want to do is pigeon yourself into a scenario where, you know, let's say you must have, you must have, you know, 40 cases open, for example. And then things happen, life happens, things evolve, and then that number is, that number fluctuates. And now we're beholden to a particular, you know, description that said they only needed to have X amount. They may be under, or they may be over, depending on what the circumstances are. So we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, be stuck in that.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Okay, so that was helpful discussion around the context of this. It sounds like this is an ongoing issue, this like ongoing matter. It kind of sounds very similar to the one above. So, and it sounds like you're making excellent progress on it. So I think from staff perspective, this is handled or being handled in due course. It's hard to put a timeline on the remainder of work. Is that a fair statement?
That would be correct.
Counsel, are you okay with eliminating this objective, moving on? I will note there's a later objective that is amorphous, but is somewhat related to that point. Okay. Third item here was identify, review, and revise as-needed departmental processes to improve operational efficiency and present to the city manager. That is a mouthful and a lot of work. So this is a prior existing objective.
It was. Can we put it up on the screen just so we can?
Sure.
Look at it. So I can tell you the, the focus of this particular objective was community development. And while it says departmental process and report back to city manager, really, we've heard loud and clear from this city council that the top priority is economic development. All of that ties back to development at the, at the, at the counter with our planners and building officials to be able to go out and build, bring businesses into the community. So really, the focus has been within community development. And while our, our goal was to bring back departmental processes as we, we, when I say we, the city manager and I, we, we took over a lot of the day-to-day operations that happened in community development. We did a deep dive. We had a consultant team that actually worked with us to really understand the, what they needed to succeed, some of the deficiencies that existed. And what we've been working on, and we're very proud to be able to make this statement, is that we've really worked to modernize and create, bring the tools that are necessary to bring our city to, to where everybody else is around us, really, to modernize our, our infrastructure and our workflow. We haven't quite gotten to processes, although they have been worked on, particularly with the arrival of Sherry and our principal planner. There are departmental processes that are right now getting drafted. And I know she's working hard before she leaves us to be able to implement a lot of those. So that's one of the reasons we haven't brought those to you. But over the last couple of years, we have talked about modernization. We have everybody on enter gov. We have it fully, fully implemented. The old system that folks were holding on to has been discontinued and put away. There's, there's one current system. The way that data is entered into the system, that is somewhat processes, but it's still modernizing. I can tell you, I signed a PO for large monitors to be placed at every planner and building officials, building staff members' desk so that we can now do a lot of, do digital intake and also do plan check, digital plan check that gets emailed back and forth as opposed to cumbersome plans that get marked up on a desk. So that is, that's what we've been able to do. I think this one should still stay on because I think there's still a lot of work to do.
Should it be specific to the community development department?
Yes. It's, it's the, it is, everyone in that department, everyone in the city really is an economic development engine for the city, but none more than the folks in community development. The work that they do touches the livelihood of private property owners, investors. And that's what we've been focusing on diligently with the help of council over the last three and a half years or so. So for it to be focused on community development is very accurate. Sherry, can I, can you come up really quick?
I actually want to jump in on this real quick as well. In identifying, reviewing, revising the processes to improve operational efficiency, you know, at the time, we didn't have the goal for, you know, customer service. And really, in this particular item, for this particular objective, you know, customer service is really important to us. And being able to be efficient is part of delivering good customer service. And so I think this actually belongs on the next, under the next goal of providing customer service as opposed to retaining, attracting, you know, well-qualified employees.
I can concurrently that. One thing I will note in conjunction with this is, am I correct in hearing that we have an interim rental planner and interim community development director?
We currently have an interim, yes. We are also currently in the recruitment process for a permanent. You know, one of the challenges that we've had with this, you know, with, with really allowing this department to succeed is just the instability of, you know, of leadership where we don't have consistent leadership for a long period of time. And so we are working through that process right now. Can't, we're not really at liberty to divulge where we are in the process.
Of course, understood, understood.
You know, but we will, you know, the hope is that we do, you know, we do hire a community development director who can then carry out, you know, this particular process and help us facilitate some of the processes that Adolfo and I can't and some of the other staff members can't.
Yeah, and I merely ask the question is to note the long-term need for a particular fulfillment as well. So I'm certainly comfortable moving this down to the customer service section as well because I agree, it also touches on a couple other areas around permit issuance efficiency and some other things or plan development efficiency and things like that as well. Counsel, would you, any objections moving this item down? Or do you have any questions about this?
So this one here, I think, is pretty important to make sure that we identify areas of improvement. Because you're, I hear you're talking about, here you would bring in a timeline as far as how long it takes to process an application. This is where it would come in? You identify if it's taking, we're taking too long, too little, or, I mean?
Not to be repetitive, but we, we have, we have the technology in place for everybody to do their job in efficient manner. And one of the things, that's something that the city manager and I worked on and our, and our, and our department worked on over the last couple of years. And then we needed the right person to come in and really do a deep dive on how the process internally happens at each planner's desk. And Sherry can talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. One of the things that really surprised me when I got here was how long it takes to get cases to the planning commission. In most cities, you can get a case to the planning commission in three to four months. And here, it takes significantly longer than that. So we now have written policies that will get a case to planning commission within four months. And I'm still convincing the planners that they can do this. We, we are working with HR on planners that, that have had difficulty in complying with the new policies, but we are moving definitely in that direction. And so we have written policies now so that the planners understand how much time they have at each step in the process to process the plans. And so change is hard, but we have definitely set up procedures so that they understand what's expected. And then incoming applications should be going out much faster.
Is that timeline typical in other jurisdictions?
Yes, yes. I looked at the timelines for other cities that publish their timelines online as well as the cities that I've worked in.
And although Sherry won't be around to help us with the next step after this, this ongoing effort is, the next step is to provide, and this is something that the city manager is very adamant about because she's seen this done in her previous city, is to provide information in the form of simple, digestible flow charts that essentially tells somebody that comes to the counter, you are here and this is what you can, these are your next steps, these are the time, and I'm your contact information. So that when they leave city hall, they have something in front of them or online. They can find something that literally walks them through a process that is a predictable process that they can hold us accountable for because it's our publication that we're handing them. That would be the final piece of this effort. We're not quite there yet, but that's the goal.
Okay. So I am curious, do we, some of this is still ongoing. What's, what would kind of be our next reporting period that we'd like to come back with some meat on the bones? And is it that documentation of the exit flow chart? Is it, what's a good milestone, team?
I mean, I always feel like, I'll just jump in while they deliberate. But I will, I think that, you know, the identifying, reviewing, and revising as-needed processes, that's, I mean, that's pretty, that's something we should be doing on a regular basis in any department, right? We're always looking for ways to improve. I think if there's anything that we're going to look at in terms of improving operational efficiency, maybe it's a worthwhile conversation to have at a study session per se. I love study sessions, but we're not necessarily looking for, you know, council to, to create the internal processes because that's, that's what, you know, that, we don't want to do that, but we definitely want to have a bigger conversation about some of the concerns that you have in terms of where those inefficiencies lie from, you know, from a customer service standpoint. And maybe that's the direction that we go into.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too, is if we could maybe identify a timeline to do a study session that provides an operational update to council on progress that's been made. Sounds like you have metrics around the system too that you can theoretically pull from to report on and then talk about next steps for additional improvements where warranted.
Because I think part of what we do provide to when we're providing context, for example, like a planner has X cases or a building, you know, inspector has X cases or whatnot, there, there really is no baseline for you to make a comparison to know what that even looks like. And I think just having that open conversation about what a community development department truly is, how they, you know, how the processes all intertwine and what it looks like, that would be a worthwhile conversation because I know there are some misconceptions about the things that happen or don't happen in the department and what timelines look like. And this would just be a good opportunity to just put everything out in the open and, and just alleviate some of the, you know, some of the stresses that go along with, with some of these processes.
So.
I have, I noticed one thing with the, you know, our city, when we mentioned about customer service is key, and we value that. And one thing I noticed we can change is I have people complaining to me saying that they don't feel welcome when they come into city hall. So I know we have that little TV that says you register here online, the little computer thing. So what I notice is I watch people walking in, they aren't greeted at all, saying, hey, if you haven't filled out your information to be in line, please come to this, but without saying, hey, ma'am, hey, sir, thank you for coming to city hall. We are honored and privileged to serve you today. If you haven't, please fill out your information here at the kiosk. I think as simple as that.
So to your point, Councilwoman, I had actually identified in our next session, we're going to get on the customer service specifically, this idea of improve the overall customer service at, at city hall, specifically how staff interacts with visitors at city hall, which I think was, was my attempt to encapsulate exactly that comment that you just made. And so I'd love to dive deeper into that. I think it's obviously related to this point about the customer service experience on applying for permits, for example. But we can get in detail when we get to that, if that makes sense?
That's perfect.
Great, okay. And so for all council, I've rewritten this item, and I'll look to a timeline here for it. But to now say, provide an update to the city council in a study session on the progress of updates in the community development department and review progress on reforms, metrics, and next objectives. Does that encapsulate what you were describing, Christine?
Staff comfortable with that? Is council comfortable with that?
You know, I also noticed this too. During the planning department, I know that, Sherry, you mentioned that in the past, it takes forever, but the goal is within four months into planning department to get there. But I noticed with a few of the application for different businesses in our city, and I talked to a few of them that already established their business. I asked them, how long did it take for them to get their license for the city? They say two years, some say three years. And I'm like, that's a little long. I mean, aren't they supposed to generate tax for us, for our city?
It is, it's embarrassing.
Exactly, thank you, Sherry. So I think we need to modify that, streamline that in a way where we make sure our staff understand if it passed six months, we have to call, follow up and say, what's going on here? You know, like not only email, because not a lot of people do email, maybe a phone call, follow up with that too, besides an email to say, hey, this is what's happening. We have to get this information within whatever, you know, 30 days, within 10 days, whatever. But we need to know what's going on here. But I think there's need to be that kind of follow-up because sometime the business owner, what they're telling me, it's like, oh, we're just waiting on staff to give us a call to let our person know. And, and they're waiting on, and then staff is waiting on them to make the call. So there's that disconnect right there. And so it's embarrassing to me to know that some of the business owner, it took them three to four years to get their license. And then now even business who are looking to do business in our city, one person is taking like three years, four years now, and they're getting really tired. So I think what it is, they've mentioned to me is when they come to planning, they tell them this is a drawing, we approve this way, then this is what we're going to do. Then it goes to building department. And then what's missing in there, I noticed, is that they say, okay, you have to do this, fix this, and then we have compliance. And then when they come back with a new drawing, whatnot, then they're like, oh, but you need to do this, this, and this. I just feel like there's laundry lists. If you want something be done, give them a laundry list. Say this needs to be done and met within X, Y, and Z. Get it done. Instead of they coming back, then, oh, there's one more. Oh, oh, there's two more you have to fix. So I think if we can streamline that, hey, this is a laundry list in the building department, please get this done, and you have three months to do it, X, Y, and Z, or something like that.
And I think I heard some of that in the language about the workflow plan of trying to provide the roadmap for where they are in the process and how they get to the end game. And I also, I guess I would, in my own clarity, try to draw a difference between, say, permits for plan development or tenant improvements and actually a business license, which of course could be tied together, but are separate processes at the city, I presume. Okay.
My, my understanding is that there's a planning study workshop that we are going to have?
Yeah, so my suggestion was this language I put here about doing a follow-up study session. I think what we're, I'm hanging on right now. First of all, is council okay with this new objective to do a study session to bring back more details about how we move projects through the development department?
That's right, that's right. That's why I, I kind of, why don't we set up the date and move on?
Exactly.
Grow into, you know, different, because I can sit here all night and give you all the, all the information, and it's not going to get anywhere.
I understand.
So a study session is to be the good, good way to go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look. Can we bring the screen back up? But we'll, we'll take a look at a, an appropriate study session date for that. I'll, I will leave that up to staff. I do want to say, you know, when it comes to looking at a particular department, I just want to caution that we be extremely careful and mindful just want to caution that we be extremely careful and mindful not to call out individuals, you know, as part of their, their work performance, because then we will be in a gray area, but we do want to look at the department in general, the functions in general, and the division in general. Specific examples are great, but we do want to caution that, you know, we shouldn't be discussing individual, individual people.
Yeah, for sure. So city manager.
Yeah, I don't think we have. I haven't discussed anyone in specific in planning or.
I just have to, I just have to preface, I just have to preface with that statement.
So currently, right now, we don't use, mention a flow chart, so currently there isn't a flow chart in use?
Well, I would say that there, that part of what Sheri and Ken have been working on is essentially a step-by-step process of how things are done. From the planner's perspective, that's very highly technical in nature. The goal is to then have information that's outward to the, to the general public that is digestible, and that's something that has not really gotten started. So the question then is, when, we can either come back a little later when we have all of it completed for a study session, or we can do it in two steps, where we come with the good work that Sheri and Ken are doing, we come sooner than later with what we've done up to date, which includes what city manager and I have been working on over the last couple of years, and then come back again once the outward-facing literature is prepared, to kind of do an all-encompassing. I'll leave that up to the council. Or Ryder, do you have any suggestions?
No, I would agree. I'd like to hear from council on that.
I will wait for the study session to, to see more information in that, but at the same time, I would like to ask if staff can look into, if, when you mentioned about flow chart, I understand, you know, we have different flow chart, if you can identify your, for small projects, it's different than mid-side projects, it's different than the bigger projects. So each flow chart or each guideline has to be different. So people, you know, people can, you know, decide, this is a mid-side projects, then they can go ahead and use that guideline.
Correct. The goal would be to, to provide digestible literature for the public to be able to follow. And if you're dealing with a, with a, lack of a better term, a very high-level sophisticated developer, we could provide them with a more detailed flow chart for that complicated project, but if you're dealing with a lot of the normal transactions at the counter, you would have something much more digestible. That is, that is the goal. But we are not ready to present that anytime soon.
Yeah.
So I will caution that. If you want us to come back with the entire presentation of everything we've done, it will be, it's a ways from now.
So I think maybe that question is, do you want a presentation sooner, or would you like a presentation inclusive of the flow chart examples?
So should we separate these, this particular item into two?
That was my, that was my suggestion, but it's up to the council.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, because that, that other more intensive reporting is going to take a while, but if you can separate this and bring us back something.
That's a high level.
Yeah, like the mayor's suggestion, the, like the process of a flow chart.
I would suggest that we take advantage of, we would take advantage of Sheri's time here, and maybe before she departs. We bring her in June to show an overview of the work that we've been doing over the last three and a half years, that really focuses on modernizing the department. Thank you to the council for investing and believing in us, because I know we've come to you several times for budget allocations. And then the good work that Sheri and Ken and Stephanie have done over the last several, I would say six months or so, that, that can all be capsized in one, in June, and then maybe end of the year, we could come back for an all-encompassing one, but for now, let's focus on the June.
So Adolfo, are you planning on June 11th or June 25th, the first week of the council meeting?
I don't know.
A second, or a second meeting?
I would say the.
We want to, we, we don't want to interfere with our budget adoption, which will also be long.
Right.
Second meeting? First meeting?
So it must be the first.
First meeting?
Yeah.
So first meeting?
Okay. So I have now updated this to reflect a second new objective, both of which are now going to shift down to customer service, because they're really not about hiring qualified staff, but more about execution of customer service. And the second one reads, develop flow charts and customer service-oriented materials that better inform developers and residents on the community development department's work process and how city customers can best partner with the city on development projects.
And as far as the who, I'm happy to leave myself and the city manager, but we need to add a, for the first one, Sheri will be with us, the interim community development director. And then for the next one, assuming we, if we don't have a director, it'd definitely be Ken or principal planner.
You're okay with me shifting these down to customer service team? We'll move those down there. All right. So next, let's go to this next item, which I had consensus on from the city council, but this was to conduct a class and compensation study. Do you want to explain what a class and compensation study is, just for the benefit of the council?
So a class and comp study are actually two separate studies. The classification study is taking a look at all the job descriptions in the city to make sure that they are well-aligned with what the job looks like, make any changes. So as you may remember, we actually started that as a city in 2017, and it was, it was, it was completed prior to my arrival, I think it was like around 2019, 2020. So we've had a recent classification study. A compensation study is more like a benchmarking. So we have, the city has chosen 12 comparable cities in Orange County, and we go out and we benchmark every single job to see where we fit in with the salaries. We also completed one of these, we had, we had also gone out and contracted, it wasn't getting done, so my department completed it in 2022. So it was done just a couple of years ago.
Thank you. So this had come up as part of a conversation, anticipating that we were also going to be entering various negotiations with bargaining units, and having the updated and latest and greatest information was identified as of interest. I don't know, Christine, if you have additional comments on this one, but.
I don't.
Okay. So the question on hand is the merits of executing on an updated compensation study in the next year or so, and I guess I'm curious about the timeline on executing on that.
So if we could start with the classification study, because that one's a little more challenging, that, that we would probably need to go out to a third-party consultant, and that would probably take upwards of two years to complete. It's a pretty long involved process that includes interviews with, both written and verbal interviews, oral interviews with our employees, and it's, it's quite extensive. As far as a compensation study, so what I do now currently is I spot check randomly. I've always come from a place where, once you sort of do your comp study, then you spot check as needed. But we can, if the council so wishes that we do a full compensation study, we could do that. We would have to get started, because negotiations is probably going, going to start here around the end of the year, beginning of the year, because our MOU is up June. So it, it takes a while to do the compensation study, but that would be a much easier, and the endeavor would be possible before the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So how often is the classification study supposed to be done?
You know, I've got to say, we, we find little things along the way that we sort of question, but if they're, if they're very small and they're not like a huge function of the job, we, we do have, I can go to Christine, and we do have a little bit of wiggle room, which you guys have given her approval to do that. But the classification study seems to have been very in-depth. I mean, they spoke to, from my understanding, every single employee. We still have all of the interviews, so it's pretty in-depth. I, I wouldn't recommend we do it that often, and it's also a very expensive endeavor. I think we paid $250,000? I, I could be off on that number. But I think, I mean, if you're asking my professional opinion, I feel like it's not broke, maybe not, you don't need to fix it, but.
Yeah, it's my think, my thinking is like, I mean, one particular job, you know, how often does it, does it, the description change? I mean, this, your, this your task, if you're a.
Yeah.
Jake, you're, I mean, how often does your, your scope of work change? I mean, are you going to, next year, you're going to have a whole different task in front of you? Do you have to change, I mean, often does one particular position?
Yeah. Unless you, as the council, say to us, this position is not working, we want you to reevaluate it, most positions do not change on a regular basis. And our, when we go out for a comp study, we actually have to compare, we don't do every single one, because that would be impossible, but we do compare some of the other cities' descriptions, and we haven't found anything that's completely off from where we currently are. They're pretty aligned, city to city. So, I mean, like I said, I, I'll take your direction, but it, I don't know if the classification component of it is where you want us to spend our time, and so.
Just, just to jump, just to jump in on that, for a comprehensive classification and compensation study, or a combination of, you know, of the two together, it's not done very frequently, as, you know, we just did one four years ago or so, which ended up being a five-year project, no fault of Jody's. But, but certainly, it's, you know, when you're, when you're doing, when you're doing that big of a comprehensive study, you, you really don't do it frequently, because of how, you know, how little change it ultimately yields at the end of the day, if you have employees that have worked in the position for, you know, quite a amount of time, like it's a lot of money and time spent in, into this effort. But generally, as positions open, as we look in the budget, as we look at positions and how they're evolving, you know, we, we do have, you know, we, we do have networks with other cities where we're seeing comparable positions, et cetera. If something comes up and it's absolutely glaring, we'll make those adjustments, which we have done, we've brought those to council as well, looking at circumstances of, you know, people in their current positions, looking at our benchmark cities, if you will. As we go into negotiations, and as cities also go into negotiations, we are seeing what other cities, you know, what they're doing with those positions as well, and doing comparisons. It's, again, it goes back to not reinventing the wheel, so we are doing these continuous comparisons without having to do a full-on class and comp study.
As an as-needed basis.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I do informal ones all the time, and when you, I, I hesitate, because when you make it formal and we produce a formal compensation study, then there's going to be expectations. And reading what the next point is that we're going to get to, you know, they could tie into that as well. So, like I said, I do informal ones. My last city, we would go out to each department and ask which classifications they wanted us to look at, and each department got like three or whatever, and so we would look at those. But we kind of have a pulse, we know when everybody else is doing their negotiations, so we wait until we see what they're doing, I talk to my counterparts. So, you know, we can do either, whatever you'd like us to do, but these are things to consider.
So the fact of considering, from my perspective, it sounds like you're saying, the classification study, you feel pretty good about the state of affairs and the details on that, and the compensation one, it sounds like you've been providing interim updates and don't feel that there's a particular need to execute a compensation study?
Well, of course, I will default to whatever the council wants me to do, but with the classification study, yes. I, I think it would be redundant at this point. With the compensation study, I, I do informally pull numbers frequently, and I use them within my, my office. And when I come to you, I'm prepared with those numbers as well.
Because I remember when, when it was initiated, by the time it was done, it was like outdated already.
But that's every day, right? So.
Yeah, but, I mean, we're talking about, you know, what was it, what long did it take, five years to get it done?
Yeah, I mean, our goal the last time was to put us at median, and we were at median, and within three months, we were no longer at median.
Yeah.
In fact, from what I have been told, the history here was, we had actually picked a certain number at one point to be like the fifth on that list, don't quote me on that number. And so we were trying to make the fifth on the list, but as soon as the next city gave theirs, we were no longer the fifth. So it's constantly a game to like, who's going to get to median? And we all look at each other's numbers, and we all talk about it, and unfortunately, we don't have a coordinated approach, I wish we did, but you're out of median the next time somebody signs a contract.
At the end of the day, we're, you know, we, all cities are struggling to hire right now. You know, it goes back to why we would have this goal to begin with, as far as attracting and hiring and retaining and developing, et cetera, that, you know, the cost of a comprehensive class and comp study, you know, it, it is a lot to, you know, it is a huge undertaking. I mean, I feel that as, with our HR and, and, you know, her team has grown as well, that we're able to, to keep up to date with what the numbers, what the compensation looks like, what the, you know, the classifications look like, the job duties, et cetera, that, that I'm comfortable if we, you know, we'll defer to council, but I'm comfortable with where we're at.
Well, I understand that you are asking the council for, for decision, but we have done the classification study before, a couple of years ago, and I don't, I'm not sure about the compensation study. But we have done this before, and this is in your area of expertise, and we trust you for, for that. And if you ask us to see if we approve for, you ask us to approve for conduct of a study or not, then, then we just have to decide on that. Going to the, deep into detail, we can't, we can't say, because you are the one who, who, who decide on that. So my question to you is right now, the thing that is, is should be a study, need to be conducted, or if it is, need to be conducted, then give us the timeframe, and then we can say yes or no on that. I think it's easy.
I would probably have a question for you when I come to you for your direction on how I can negotiate. Are you willing to match the median, which is what the expectation will be if we do a compensation study? Or are you going to look at a budget? So I think, you know, that's the way that I kind of look at it. If you, if you produce this, this product, and we have a median number, the staff is going to expect a median number. With our financial situation, I don't know if that's possible. And so it would be really up to you if you want to look at it from a, how much you, you provide, if you provide for a raise, or if you really want to get to that median that we have in the past said that we would try to match.
From, from what I see, it doesn't matter, you have budget and no budget. You still have to do the classification study before you, you, if you don't have money, you don't have money. But if you have money, then based on the classification, or based on your study, we can decide, decide whether we can move forward or not.
Yeah.
But if we, without, without the outcome of the study, we cannot, we cannot do anything. I don't think that we can do anything, even though we said, we can't say that, oh, you know, go ahead and proceed, and then we will guarantee that we are going to come and sit for it.
Maybe I don't understand. So are you thinking that if I don't have a compensation study done, you can't, you can't give me a budget? Is that what?
I think the mayor needs the data.
Yeah, he just, he wants to know if you think we need a class and comp, so you're not basing your expertise on.
What I'm hearing you say is you don't think we need a compensation study?
I would say that I informally do a comp study constantly, and when we have discussions, I come to you with, with current valid information. I would never come into a room to talk to you without knowing what, what I think that you need to know, so.
So your answer is yes, go ahead and allow you to conduct a classification and compensation study?
My actual, my answer is no. I would say, don't do a classification and allow me to keep going with my informal compensation study. And then if you have specific questions about specific positions, then I can give it to you at that time.
Without a study required.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I guess my question is, Jody, how much did it cost us to do a classification last time?
So it was before my time, but I believe we paid $250,000, and that only gave us 50 jobs. We tried to go out to other, to another agency, I think we actually switched two agencies. Christine knows the history a little bit better than I do, and it was just costly, and it was taking forever. So when I got here, I finally just said to the council, can I please take this and do the, not the classification, the classification is a very specialized job that I, I just don't feel like my team is prepared to do. But the compensation, you know, I said, can we just take over the compensation? And so it didn't cost us anything extra than whatever hours my staff put in.
That's what I was suggesting, just kind of remove the classification study portion of this, just for starters. And if you feel the compensation portion of it, if you can do it as an ongoing, you're, you kind of know when to do, kind of look at other jurisdictions with what they have.
Yes.
Just come back with this, with the report on however many other cities are what they have.
So stick to the informal one that I've been doing.
Yeah, yeah.
So you should just take that off.
So I think, I think that actually, we would just take this, we would just remove this, we will drop the subjective based upon now having some very informed background information from city staff, and we can move on to the next item. from city staff. And we can move on to the next item that's being discussed here. Okay? So, the next item that's discussed here is a big objective, not a lot of details here because it's a lengthy process, but theoretically, there'll be a timeline on it, which is conduct the union negotiations successfully in a way that respects our staff and also does not destroy the financial future of the city. I suspect everybody would like both those things to exist. So, fundamental question is, who's involved in this process? And maybe the anticipated timeline for when those union negotiations will conclude unless we wish to identify an interim step in that process.
So, I am considered the chief negotiator for the city. I have already started talking to the unions and getting an idea of when they want to start. They'd like to start sometime late fall. So, I have already started my review of the MOU and the policies and my informal compensation studies. It's a little hard because a lot of people haven't closed their MOUs for this year. So, I really stick to what the MOUs are saying. So, I've already started my work. I believe that we will probably start getting into the weeds on this with the unions, probably beginning of December. Last year was kind of a struggle. It took a pretty long time for us to close the MOU because we had a tremendous amount of updates. I don't anticipate that being the problem this year. My goal is to have the new, well, my goal is to come to you at the beginning of the year with some idea of what my authority will be when I'm having these discussions. But my goal is to have this done way before the June deadline. So, I'd like to have it done probably in sometime in May so that we have some room to implement. Does that answer the question?
It does answer the question. It also provides a key point about an update of the council sometime in January, February with kind of where things are at.
Yes. I mean, if you want to have that conversation before, that just, that gives me more time. But usually, how we like to do it is we like to sit with the union and see what they're looking at. And sometimes it takes more time. They're not always prepared to give me that right away. So, that's what, that's what took so long the last time.
How about my suggestion as we identify February 2026 as the objective for providing an update of the city council while retaining the broader objective of concluding negotiations successfully? That way, they'll have, okay. Any questions or comments on that, council? Okay, great. Next up is revisit the recruitment process and our strategies for attracting talent to this city. So, this speaks to some of the earlier comments we had about making our job postings more attractive and getting away from the government language to something that's more digestible. There was just general comments or questions. And I want to make sure we're not getting into operational weeds for you because you're the professional and as evidenced by your excellent commentary this evening. I am just curious if you have some specific objectives you'd love to either report back or demonstrate progress on related to the recruitment process around here that we could identify for council's benefit.
So, I would say that, so currently, we only have, I think it's 10 open positions? We have 10 open positions currently. I now have two recruiters who do recruiting as probably half of their work. So, as compared to a year ago, I only had one that that was half their job. So, I've got a full-time equivalent doing recruiting. So, our vacancies are a little bit higher because we're not recruiting for everything, but our current recruitment efforts are, we're doing very well. As far as the process, I mean, we use a software that all other government agencies, we advertise where all the other agencies are. Some of the things that we've done differently is we've really increased our budget to go out to specialized groups. Like Ashton, she's in the clerk world. She's a CPA. I don't know the number. I don't know the acronym.
California Civic Corp Association.
She's president of something.
Yeah. So, now what we're doing is, we are going out to the groups that people have membership in and we're targeting them. I also have one of my analysts. So, our most difficult positions, and I actually wrote this down in anticipation. So, our most difficult positions have actually been community development director, accounting manager, city engineer, management analyst. We have a dispatch shortage, but there's a dispatch shortage all over the country, senior engineer and senior planner. So, where we are struggling is our more senior positions. So, I have asked my, one of my two recruiters, because most of these seem to fall in his category, to actually go into these groups, find out who the membership is, and personally email every single member, which does take a lot of time. So, that, and then in addition, we're trying to go out to more events. There was an event at the Ocean View High School last week. Did I get the name right?
Just, Ocean View School.
Six or 700 people were there. It was, it was a success. He went out there. He talked to dozens of people. And so, hopefully, we'll get some candidates out of that. So, we're trying on all fronts. But, you know, there are some complexities. I mean, to be quite honest, our salaries are still less than other cities. I do think we have pretty good benefits, but there are some things that we could do a little bit differently to maybe attract some of these higher-level people.
Some of the difficulties that comes with some of those higher-level folks that have a lot of the experiences, you know, they're in other cities, they're in other agencies in which they have, and sorry to jump in on this, but some of the other cities have, you know, they have systems in which they're considered classic members, or they have, you know, essentially a higher retirement rate through CalPERS, whereas people who are incoming, who are going to be new to our organization are going to be leaving, or they have a lower percentage rate, for example, for their, for retirement, or they're, you know, they're what's called Pepper employees. And so, their benefits are a lot different. They're capped out differently. They pay into it a little bit differently. And so, all those challenges make it really difficult for someone who's seasoned and already in the system to really want to jump ship to another job. The other thing that we've also seen as well for certain positions is there are hiring bonuses that are being provided by some of these much more affluent, posh cities that have the money to be able to attract folks. You know, the nice thing too is, we've had, we've actually had some folks leave to another city, thinking the grass is greener on the other side, and they've since returned to our city, you know, because we do offer a certain vibe that some of the other cities were not able to provide for them, and certain benefits that they were not getting, even if it's not monetary. But our big challenge is getting that journey level, you know, professional level employee in, especially some of the ones that she named off as well. Some of them are actually making more in the private sector, which then makes it challenging to attract them into the public sector if they don't already work here. So, there are a lot of different challenges.
Yeah. One of the things, and I feel like we've talked about this before in closed session, but like Pepper employees, they're the new, they're the new pension system. And the pension is inferior to the classics. Both, there's a first tier and a second tier. And so, Pepper people are about the almighty dollar that they get in their paycheck. They don't think about the pension necessarily because their pension isn't as good. And so, as much as I love to tackle this question and this issue, and I'm constantly thinking about how do I educate the younger generations on what a pension is and how important it'll be in 60 years, you know, when they can't pay their rent, they look for the job that makes more money. So, we recently had a person who left here to make $3 more an hour somewhere else, realized that they weren't happy there and came back. And that's happened time and time again. I mean, I could probably count five people in the last year that have bounced back. So, we are doing something right. But when they go out to other cities and they look at their bottom dollar of what they get paid hourly, they get, you know, attracted to that dollar amount. They just, but then when they get there, I don't know what their situation is, but they come back. So, this is not a problem that's going to go away. We just have to figure out how to handle it a little bit better. And I work on that every day. But unfortunately, some of these things take throwing money at things that, you know, I just have not been in a place to present any of my options for you as of yet. So.
Okay. Council members, you've had some great commentary from your HR professional and your city manager. Do you have any thoughts, comments, or any other elements to this that you wish to comment on? I'm having a hard time figuring out what angle we can put on here to give a specification or direction or report back unless it's requesting, say, listing of options for enhanced recruitment capabilities, whether it's bonuses for certain difficult positions, or consulting HR outside recruitment firms or something like that. I don't know. I defer to the HR director come up with that list. But do you have any thoughts, council members?
Well, I was, on this one in particular here, I mean, we're kind of like what Jody's recommendation, professional recommendations are at this point. If you want to come back with ideas, or, you know, give us, if you need approval for those ideas?
I think some of my ideas will be when I bring negotiation conversations to you. That would probably be the best place for us to talk about that.
I have a question. So, what's your, you guys use to hire people? Like, are there a process that you guys use or a structure that you guys use to hire people?
Yeah. So, we use a program called NeoGov. I would say that almost every government agency uses it. So, with that, it goes out to, we place the position. Positions are open from anywhere from two weeks to a month, depending on what position, how many applicants we think we'll get. Like Jake's positions tend to get 100, so we're only going to keep it up for two weeks. But a position for an analyst may only get 18, so we may keep it up for a month. So, we use that. And then, based off of that, then it goes out and it gets advertised on a site called GovernmentJobs.com. So, people who are specifically looking for municipalities, government jobs, that's where they go and search for their positions. And then, we just navigate through the paperwork, through that system. The hiring managers go through and they look at all the applications. They disposition whether they want to interview them or not. So, it's a pretty well-oiled recruitment tool that's been used by hundreds of organizations, if not thousands across.
Or there, is this, I guess, this website, is it easy for us, council, mayor, to take a look at it and see the process?
To see the process? I mean, if you wanted to see the process, you would probably have to come in and see it from our end. But if you wanted to see what the postings look like, you would go to GovernmentJobs.com, or you could look up City of Westminster Jobs and it would take you there. So.
Yeah, I'll just schedule an appointment to come see you, to see what you guys see.
Okay.
And then, if any of the council mayor wants to do that, great.
I will set you up with one of my recruiters, yes.
We appreciate that you go through the, you know, recruitment process and all the things that you have to go through. But my question to you is to remain, is there a need for, to revisit the recruitment process or not? And if it does, there's a need for it, then when? We just get it going?
So, from a software program, I don't think there's a need to revisit it. From being attractive to candidates, that is, that is something I think about every single day and try to improve upon. So, going out to, to events and putting our name out there. Shawna is, Shawna Hunter is one of our new senior analysts. She puts out, I think, weekly our open positions. She puts out weekly our new hires to make it a little bit more fun. So, anybody who's on our Instagram page, they're seeing a more lighthearted and fun way to look at Westminster. I think we are going through the same challenges as every other city. I think every city is really struggling to find good talent right now.
So, I think what I'm, sorry.
The question to remain, is there a need for revisit the recruitment process or not?
I think I'm not hearing anything. I'm with you, Mayor. Like, I'm not hearing a specific objective identified.
I would say no.
Other than saying something about the, other than the future union negotiations, that there may be some additional carrots to include in that process.
Yeah. I mean, I would say no. I don't see any other way. We just continue to improve upon it as we get new ideas.
Take it off.
So, then I think we're taking this off?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any objection to taking this off from the council?
No.
Okay. All right. This is going to get a pretty skinny little section here. Last one, I did not have a chance to get consensus on this particular item, was provide council resources and training to be effective, to be effective, meaning effective in policy areas around policy innovations, ideas, state legislative impacts, conferences. I know you currently have out resources that enable you to go to conferences and attend other programming. This surface has an idea that was raised, and I need to know if there's council interest and consensus in this issue. And if so, how you would like to measure yourself in making progress on this?
I think this one, we already have the resources available to us. And it's just a matter of take people, you know, individually taking an interest in, everybody want to learn. You can attend as many conferences as you can.
Correct. You can lead a horse to water. You can't make him drink it.
Exactly. So, this one, I would say remove it.
I think on this one, because it doesn't really fit with our, I mean, it's almost like this would be its own goal for council member development as opposed to staff. But like, I think there are resources and training available out there for specific interests. So, I think maybe the benefit of this is, it's not necessarily for this list, but if you as an individual want to, you know, certain areas that you want to receive more training on, get more resources, find information, I can certainly help facilitate that with you individually. Because I know not everyone's needs are the same. And putting kind of a timeframe on something like this as well could be difficult if there isn't a particular training available for quite some time.
Agreed.
So, your recommendation is to remove it from?
Yeah.
That would be, I'm not hearing a lot of motivation from the council in this particular with details. And I think the points have been made around, there are available resources to help support this as necessary as it is.
Yeah. I don't think we should put a timeframe on it, but the resources should be available for the council, whoever wants to go or who wants.
I think it's going on right now.
And I believe the answers are currently available, right? So, I think this one has actually effectively already been accomplished in terms of the available resources. All right. So, I'm going to put a strike through on that one. Let's move down now into our customer service section. So, the first two, we actually had previously up above. And we've removed them from there and they became much more specific to customer service around community development activities. So, we'll move down to line item three, which is develop and provide customer service training for all public-facing divisions. This is a carryover from prior, from a prior objective. So, I don't know if we want to provide a brief status update on that, or if this is now one we can consider accomplished.
So, this particular, so, customer service, good customer service is always something that we're always driving for. And at some point, there was customer service training that was provided for front-facing, you know, divisions. I think as staff has changed over time and responsibilities have changed, I think, you know, revisiting this would not be a bad idea. But I do think that customer service is different in terms of what the expectations are for each, you know, department or even each division, you know, for that matter. And so, I think we should have a, we should have a, an objective for the customer service training that each department would be responsible for achieving. And I think that would be a fair, that would be a fair expectation.
So, I think what I'm hearing you say is, we'd keep this. And we also acknowledge that there's some new training needed because of staff turnover?
Yes.
To make sure we cover staff that are newer to the organization.
And now that we've.
But we would like it to be training that is specific to the department needs.
Yes.
Theoretically, just anticipating some council, some council member comments concerning the experience of walking into city hall and interacting with front desk staff. I'm assuming that whoever those staff are also a department.
And that goes along with, that goes along with, you know, the inconsistency that exists with some of our individuals at the front counter. Because I can guarantee, I know exactly which ones are friendly and welcoming, et cetera. And I know which other ones that are not as friendly and welcoming. And maybe they're not the ones that work at the counter all the time. But I think where we're at is, we just need to revisit, particularly if you're working in, you know, the lobby of any city facility, whether it's PD, community services, city hall, over at the yard. If you are a public-facing, you know, front counter staff person, or you're going to be, you work at the front counter for some period of time, even if it's not a full-time, you know, role for you, we should revisit customer service to ensure that we are all providing the same high-quality level that's expected.
And that one, that particular department head, we evaluate that particular employee and if they're not, if they're not cutting it, or they're not being as friendly, then that department head can make that call to maybe move them off of that position.
Yeah. So, we, so, so when we're talking about public-facing roles, so we have, we have a full-time receptionist where that person's main role is to greet people coming in. She's helpful. I hear her from my office. She's great. You know, that's someone whose sole responsibility is providing, providing that concierge service. Now, somebody coming to city hall, we didn't have a. to City Hall, we didn't have a receptionist for a long time, right? This is a relatively newer position, which actually stemmed from the previous strategic plan, because y'all felt that that was important to have that person. Now, people who've been accustomed to coming in the City Hall and going to whichever counter that they were used to going to before, right, without going to reception, they're going to go to a particular counter, be greeted by someone, or not, in, you know, in some of the experiences that, that have been mentioned here. That's, that's where, you know, that's where the department head has to become accountable and aware. And we've, we've taken some steps to, you know, to, to prevent some of those issues, but also resolve some of those issues. But, you know, it's, sometimes it's not as easy removing the person from the position per se. We still have a lot of positions that are single-role positions, in which only one person at City Hall, or in the agency, you know, does that work. Or, you know, they're, they're more technical in nature, they have to come to the counter. They're not necessarily a counterperson, but they're having to work with, you know, with the, with a resident or developer. That makes them public-facing to some capacity, but customer service is not their focal point. Technical work is their focal point, right? But we need to, we need to remind, we do need to remind our staff that, you know, we are in public service. What we do is provide service. We need to be providing good customer service. That resonates, you know, that should be resonating across the board, whether you're technical or not, or in the field, not in the field, behind a desk, not on the phone as much, but you need to greet someone, it doesn't matter. So I think where we're at is, we do need to revisit customer service training. There may be a level of investment that's required to have a professional facilitator come out, to meet with individual departments for those individual needs. But it's certainly worthwhile to keep it on here.
So leave it on there, but, and then just, would that be ongoing? Is that what it would be on there?
It's, you know, it's, it should always be ongoing, especially since we have change of staff, or maybe change in attitude of current staff, whatever that is. But I would say for an initial reboot, if you will, there should be a timeline for that initial reboot. Like, it needs to be a collaboration of the department heads at this point to identify where some of our issues are. And maybe we have a combined training for certain divisions, and then we have specialized training for other ones. But, but we certainly need to keep it on here.
Okay. And what time, what would that be?
Yeah, it's gonna, six months?
I probably, I.
To get throughout departments?
Yeah, like, we're, I would probably say for the comprehensive, for a more comprehensive kickoff, you know, September's a busy month. Are we in October yet? Can we move it to October, or is that too far?
No, I, six months.
Okay, let's, let's just do, let's just do the October six months. But as things arise, as issues arise, we, we obviously have been dealing with those as they come up, so we'll continue to do that. But as far as programmatically structuring a, you know, customer service training, we'll, we'll aim for October. And if we get it done earlier, we get it done earlier.
And I'll just note, I modified this a little bit as we were talking. So it's develop and provide customer service training for all public-facing divisions with department-driven content, meaning it's going to be at the department level, that meets the needs of specific departments and/or the context of their role at the city, meaning they're in some public-facing position or working at a front desk, regardless of which department they're in. And I think as well, council member, that addresses a concern you raised previously about that initial customer service experience, walking into City Hall, that tries to speak to that context point exactly as you're describing it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Oh, well, what I heard is that this is a continuous customer service training provided to the employees. But I think that, you know, certain training that we have done to certain employees, they need to sign off for, for it, you know, can continue to provide trainings after training after training, because they have to know their roles and responsibility. I don't know if that's, make any sense to you?
Well, I think.
Like, are they written on, if, I mean, if this first warning from their department head and stuff like that?
So, yeah, so, I mean, for, you know, for any employee, if you're, so I, I think the purpose of this is, we're going to have a little bit of a reset, if you will. We'll call this the reset. But any time that an employee is not providing the level of service they're supposed to, it's, you know, or it's, it's perceived as a certain way, the department head or supervisor will address that issue. And with that, if it's repetitive, it becomes disciplinary, and that's where it becomes, you know, a whole other process.
All right. And I think what we heard was an objective of October to actually reboot that process, as she's describing it. So, and I think that's a pretty chunky objective to go accomplish. So I think that works. Okay, let's move down to the next one, which is evaluate, make recommendations regarding planning and building division forums, templates, applications, informational materials used by the public, and provide an update to the city council with, at an annual review process. I somewhat feel like this is adjacent to something we talked about before?
Exactly. So it's what we just brought down from the previous section.
So actually, this is redundant with the second line item up above, which is?
It's redundant with the first and second, but yes.
Okay. So council members, if you agree with me, and you're ACM, this is redundant, I'd like to delete this particular objective, because we actually replaced it by the two prior ones we worked on earlier together. All right, great. We'll strike through that bad boy. And then this is another, I believe, carryover, which is evaluate current online process, evaluate current online user processes and functionality, and seek technology to improve online customer experience. Is there some prior context for this one that you may recall?
It's almost relatively redundant. This one was also tied in with community development as well. So I think, I know it says all department heads, but.
Yeah, it also touched a little bit on the app that we have. So we did do, actually, two reboots now. One hard reboot, where we got everybody in the room earlier last year, middle of last year, and essentially got everybody on board. As some divisions were shifting back, like, for example, code enforcement shifted back to City Hall, we, we reworked the workflow within the app that is pretty popular with the community and other staff members. So, and then recently, as recently as about a month ago, we went back as a department to evaluate the effectiveness of the app as well. And then obviously, I had mentioned previously that we had done modernization within our department. And I know that, as I look over to the city clerk, I know she's working on modernizing the way committees conduct business through, through the proper software. As I know, Public Works is also doing the same, and obviously the police department. So that's all, I think it's all part of normal business at this point. So I would recommend removing that.
Yeah, as part of the strategic plan objective under this goal, previously, we did hire a webmaster.
That's correct.
Who's been with us for a few months now, who's really looking at, you know, improving that online customer experience, really diving into the website, content on the website, looking at the app and other, you know, other ways to increase, you know, accessibility, and just make things a lot easier for user navigation. So we are working, she is working on that as, as her main priority.
So I'm hearing this is actually kind of a hangover, but in maintenance mode at this point?
Pretty much.
So unless council has some specific element around this you want to comment on, I think we can strike this one.
I heard enough of removal, so delete it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I heard a lot of removal, so delete them.
Okay.
The sooner the better.
Yes.
All right. Next up is streamline and modernize the planning and permit process. We actually already covered this, so I actually feel like this one is wiped out as well. We covered it with your prescient discussions earlier, so we can blow that away unless you object. I'm not hearing any objections, so we'll strike that. And then this last one was improve the business licensing process to keep businesses informed on status. Again, this is in yellow category, which means it was not one I heard consensus on, but it came up as some concerns that were either expressed about the digital-only process. I believe this also tied in with some questions about, like, integrating onsite concierge service to better support the, the business licensing application process that's currently done digitally. I subsequently had a conversation with city staff, who I believe told me that there is now actually a concierge at City Hall who works on supporting that. So in some ways, I actually feel like this might have been proactively addressed. But having said that, does council have any comments they want to make about this particular objective? Or is there some consensus to try to do something about this?
So it's just want to verify. So we do have staff who call them and check on them three months or six months to see how the application process is going for them?
So when we're talking about this particular process, we're talking about the business license process, which is different than actually building your project, right? So as part of the business license project and working with community development, the third-party company processes everything through our city staff. And early on, Sherry and myself identified that there were lapses in planning and triaging the workflow that comes through that. So that's been taken care of. So the answer is yes to that. And then the other part of it was that we, we understand that everybody has different needs in our community, and some folks just wanted to interface with a human being at the counter. So as recently as late last year, we implemented the concierge service. I know I've overseen two or three interactions through the concierge service, and it's, so far, I think it's working really well. It's really in the process, but I feel confident that we'll be able to maintain, keep this really tight as we move forward to really solidifying the changes in community development.
So I think the answer is.
You know, I think that's great for the business license now, to hear that you confirm that. That's amazing. That's great progress for us, for the city. Now, my concern would be more of the planning department and the building. So if we can take out the business license and put in planning?
But I think the planning stuff was addressed with the prior objective we have up in this item.
It's just a business license.
Yeah, planning and building are addressed in the first two bullet points. I don't know if you can shift down a little bit.
And business licensing just to, so business licensing is moving to the finance department at some point, too. It is, you know, it is, it is a revenue collection. So, but, but, but that process of business licensing, so I think there's, there becomes some confusion when it comes to certain businesses, you know, certain businesses coming in. Getting the business license is one thing, and then there are other triggers that may happen in their business license process related to, you know, their, their, their actual business itself, the planning aspect, the building aspects, et cetera. Those are not the things that should be holding up the business license. We essentially issue a business license to a business. Some, you know, at some point, it's, depending on the type of business and what needs to be done, the business license that we provide is, you know, it's, it's kind of a contingent one. They can go to, you know, that way they can go to a bank and say that they're a legitimate business, et cetera. But they can't operate until, you know, they have certain requirements that are met, which is a different process, right? So this business licensing process, and keeping businesses informed on, you know, on their status. A few years ago, the city, you know, before, before my time, we contracted with HDL. And when we contracted with HDL, and the process for getting a business license is basically through an external portal, really all it is, is it's an external portal that someone goes and fills out an application, but it's the program, it's that, that application still has to go to the city. And that created some confusion from folks as far as like what they're seeing as their end product, if there's a holdup, et cetera. There was lack of communication between the business license side and the planning and building side, for example. And we've since kind of fixed some of those issues. But this, this business licensing process, now having that concierge, it's really to help with the business license aspect of it. Now, if there are issues that stem from planning and building, because they need to meet certain requirements, that's a whole other, that's, that's a whole other issue.
Right, right. And so on this top point that you have, can you go stroll up again that you have up there? It says, provide updates on the city council to the study session process on community development department, review process on inform, reform metric, and the next objectives. So on there, can we put, like, maybe add in, like, process to inform their status in planning and building department?
The next one.
I mean, the second one, develop flow chart, is that what you're talking about? Either one of them, but just add it.
My understanding is, is that there are a bunch of reforms that have been implemented in the community development process, and that we're planning on, staff is planning presenting that on June 11th, that address some of these inefficiencies that were triggered between the licensing, among other issues, the licensing department and working through it with the community development. And so some of those points have been connected. I can, we don't have to presume, we could certainly add a clause in here that denotes that integration of the licensing with the community development process as part of that update that's provided to you, if that's.
Yeah.
I have different thinking about that. Can you roll, rub again to the last item that we're talking about? My suggestion is to keep the improved business license process there and monitor it, simply because that if, I want to remind council, several months ago, I believe that there were concern from this council body that the process of getting a business license is too long. And so because of that, the council have, have staff to look into the hybrid. And right now, I know that the hybrid, they just mentioned, the hybrid is another process that, you know, serve in-house, to work with HDL so that we can provide faster and better communication and improve the business licensing. And, you know, we just implement not, not too long ago, just several months, and we still, and I think that we make progress out of that, hearing from you and from the city manager. I would say that, you know, we continue to keep that so that we can monitor it and, you know, until that we feel comfortable with that. We feel that we make progress on that, then we can.
Can we change the first word?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we want to just do it, provide update to the city council?
Monitor, monitor the business license process?
Yes.
I would say provide an update, because we're always going to be monitoring. Let's provide an update maybe in five months, six months?
I would recommend after, I would say September.
September.
Gives us an opportunity to collect a lot of data. After the concierge service is implemented, we'll be able to bring you more data as to how many people are actually meeting the concierge.
Yes. I'm happy with that.
And you, on that one, you would explain the process, because I think getting the business license, that is, that doesn't take very long. There's, the other entitlements is.
Yeah, we.
Which, what takes longer. It's because if they're, if they're missing, you can issue, like, the city manager was explaining, you can, we can issue a business license so they can, if they need to go, open up a bank account, they need to show that business license number for that bank account, but they're not actually going to be open for operation until they give the remainder of their entitlements, which that, it's completely different.
Completely different process, yeah.
And, and a lot of times, it's not something that staff is holding up. It's something that their architect, or what engineers, whatever it may be, that their, that's was taking a long time. And is that, at that point, is out of staff's hands.
Absolutely.
As far as the timeline, something that we can be, that can be done is maybe set up, set a time, that if they do not provide that information by that time, then either they get a phone call, say you have an X amount, your time's running out, and if you don't have it by that time, maybe your, your application is void, or something of that nature. Because that puts the onus on them to hurry up. They need to hurry up. Then we get blamed for the, our staff gets blamed, and our staff has more on their face, it's our fault. It's not our fault.
That's true.
I would be curious to know what, what HDL's platform does to notify applicants of the status of a waiver application, right? It would kind of be, I would assume they do some, I mean, I've applied through business license with HDL. I've never had a real problem with it, but.
Right. No, there, I mean, we've made it so that there's really three or four different ways to get to the end, right? I mean, if you, if you have a quick process, and you're, you're really good, and you're a great developer, you do this all the time, you're able to get your business license, you get your, you get your permit, your building, and you're cleared, and you're up and, up and running. If it's a longer type of a timeline, we do the de facto business license, where we give you the business license. It's not the official. It lets you set up banking and all the, all the other necessary activities. At the end of the day, compliance is a requirement. Whether you go de facto, we put you on a list, and then we go knock on your door to make sure that you're not operating illegally. If you go the proper, I would say, the more traditional route, then you end up also in compliance at the end. The goal is to provide flexibility, and again, like city manager said, not to hold up anybody's ability to establish a business in our city.
Good.
Okay, so I've now modified this language. I believe it's reflective of what you were suggesting, Mayor, and it's in line with this timeline for September 2025 to come back and report on progress and the impact of the concierge program. Great, okay, let's go to our new goal.
Could we go back to that one?
My apologies?
Sure. Let me just make sure. Yes, I just wanted to make sure it also was overall, we're going to provide an update on the overall thing, but also focus on the concierge, so that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and sorry, I assumed it would be the finance director, but is that the right who there, or city manager? Is there?
That one's still out of our shop, just because we're overseeing HDL. That one's still out of our shop, just because we're overseeing HDL. We're, we're, like, like city manager stated, we're in a transition with that particular function.
Okay. Okay. We'll put you guys down. Okay. Now, let's go to our new goal, which is enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the city. So we had two in the green that were identified as consensus items and then three additionals that we didn't get a chance to build a consensus around. So the first one, which is revisit the code enforcement process to be more proactive. As I foreshadowed before, this is really a discussion where in some cities, they like to just wait for a resident to raise a complaint and then they'll be responsive. Here, what I was hearing some consensus on is we'd like to be a little more proactive in identifying concerns, egregious issues, obvious things that need to be addressed. Well-recognized that to do this, it takes software, it takes people, most importantly. And, but this is some consensus I heard from the council. So I would welcome council discussion on this and maybe some conversation about strategies we can identify on interim step to show some progress on proactive enforcement on this. So council first, is this aptly described as, as an area or would you like to provide some color commentary for staff to respond to?
No, I think this is a really important, important topic to cover. Because I think this all ties down, ties to economic development. It also ties to businesses wanting to come to our city. You know, if you have a rundown looking city, businesses aren't going to want to come here. So I think this, by us having a, an effective code enforcement, it's an all-around benefit, quality of life, property values, all that. So we need a really robust code enforcement. And also the other thing that I, another point that I want to make is that that, that needs to be supported by this council. That if, if there is a code violation, a lot of times what happens is that particular resident or business owner then comes a calling and then, then council needs to stand the grounds of, hey, the code is a code and you need to comply. Simple as that.
I appreciate raising that point, Vice Mayor. That's sometimes the response that we have for being proactive versus reactive in code enforcement, so.
Yeah, so that's, and we need to, we need to really understand what's at stake by not enforcing the code. And by not enforcing just the, even just basic maintenance issues that commercial properties are not doing. And we need to be supportive of staff, we need to be a team, so. But we also need, very important, we need code enforcement to do their job. They need to be out there not waiting for a phone call, need to be out there patrolling. They need to have a task, hey, we're going to look at, let's look at illegal banners, okay? Let's get out there. If somebody has an illegal banner, make sure they get written up, you know, of that nature. Create, create focus for them, you know, something of that nature, so.
Yeah, I think it's very important for the council to support the code enforcement process. One thing is that we, we always have, I'd rather have, to be, I'd rather be proactive instead of, you know, just wait there, sit there and wait and people call and then we can react to the problem. The reason is we want to make sure that we live in the city, that we want to beautify the city, we want to have a city with, you know, proud of, of living here, just like the mission that we have, right? And at the same time, the body, this city council body is the body of legislative to make up, you know, policy and, and, and other regulations. And then by the time that we finish with those and, and passed by the city council and if we are not enforcing it, then, then why? Why, you know, what came up with this policy for, or regulation or ordinance for the matter? So I think that we need to be proactively enforce this, but at the same time, we have to look at the, the power, manpower. And the city council will have to support staff to hire more code enforcement if need to, so that they can do their, their work.
Exactly. I think it's, it would be, you will need human power to make this happen.
Yes.
So I, we've heard some color commentary. Any comments, Councilman? So I guess my question would be for staff, how would you like to go after this bad boy?
So I would like to turn it over to Sheri. Her and the interim code enforcement manager have a plan and it's being implemented as we speak.
We have a plan. This is awesome. Sheri, you're the star tonight, by the way.
I'm sorry?
You're the star tonight. You're crushing it.
I am pleased to report to you that this past month, we challenged all of our code enforcement officers to initiate 40 cases each. And I know for sure one of them has done and I believe the other two are going to do it as well. So we have been pushing them to be more proactive and we will be pushing them to continue to do that as well. So the officers have heard that you wish them to be more proactive and certainly with the inclusion of this goal in the strategic plan will reinforce that. But we are including that in their weekly goals to initiate more cases individually.
And I guess if I could draw a clarification, initiate is different than respond?
Correct.
Okay.
Then thank you for, for all the hard work there. But at the same time, instead of revisit, can we do like the other one, provide update to the council?
As part of the title, yes.
Yeah, so it sounds like we maybe, given this new additional information, we want to provide an update to council about the outcome of some of these renewed efforts and maybe some metrics or data, because I assume you have a case management system.
Yeah.
Is there something as far as, like, I know years ago, a long, a while back, before any of us here, there was a time where code enforcement got direction, like I mentioned earlier, I guess at that time, there might've been a lot of banners up in the city and I don't know, I don't know, you may remember Adolpho.
Correct.
That was, I don't know whose direction that was from, but they had to go out and look for, you know, illegal banners. Is that something that you think, Sheri, that, that needs to be done, like given a focus? You know, if, if out there in the community is, there's again banners or inoperable vehicles or something that they have a task to go and look for these things? Give them a task is what I guess what I'm asking?
We could be focusing, what we did this month is we focused on residential. And so we, we challenged the officers to find, initiate 40 cases in our residential neighborhoods. But we certainly could be focusing on commercial next or on banners or something else.
Yeah, I, I, I personally would like to see, because that's what the community sees is on their, you know, major arterios, is that commercial, commercial property is not being maintained, you know, something or another. There's landscape issues, there's the, I mean, there's other things that I see, like one other thing I see is on certain commercial properties where they have the, their trash bins, you know, outside of the screen there, they're supposed to be in a trash enclosure and they're not, they're out front and when they're visible from the public view, you know, things of that nature. That's what I see. So I think commercial properties is something we really need to focus on.
We can definitely do that. I can tell you that our interim code enforcement manager is going out with each code enforcement officer, he's getting to understand essentially the condition of the city. He came from another city that had probably bigger challenges than us. And he is trying to understand the needs of the community so that then he can have a work plan for each of the, for his, for his division to implement. But definitely your, your comments will be included in that.
Okay. Maybe as part of the reporting back metrics, it could also be some geolocation data on that too, because I would assume you have some geolocation data. So you could show where in the city it's being enforced to, just especially for some of those commercial corridors as you're getting more data.
Yeah, the modernization we talked about for the department has benefited code enforcement significantly. So I can tell you our code enforcement, interim code enforcement manager is on the phone regularly with entergov, trying to understand how to extract information. And as far as when we would come back with this update, again, I think it's a, let's collect more data under this new leadership to really be able to contrast and, and show the differences.
So is that a September, October, November?
I would say September.
Okay.
I think the next item is very much coincide with the, the item that we just talked about. So it's also in the code enforcement process.
It definitely is. Mayor, I would totally agree with your point, that's an enforcement issue. I think there were also some other programs envisioned here around, say, encouraging resident investment in their own front yards and decorations and other programming that's, you know, designed to kind of encourage resident beautification efforts or collaborating with water districts on drought tolerant plantings and things like that. You know, this is admittedly a pretty amorphous idea. It's clearly aligned with the broader goal objective and in some ways, this may be something where it's a, to the extent we want to pursue this and council has consensus on this, it's something to say, you know, staff can identify additional programming opportunities to collaborate with the community for achieving some of these beautification efforts. And that would really just be putting it in the hands of staff to develop some of these ideas at some point.
If I may, when I say take steps towards city beautification to improve quality of life, I mean, I noticed other cities, they're implementing, you know, street art, you know, they're implementing utility box art, you know, those are the type of things that I think would be, you know, something that they're going, steps towards beautification, that's what we're trying to accomplish on this, when it says beautiful city beautification. Those are what I would consider steps towards beautification.
Okay.
What I would like to see, I see once you start doing things of that nature in the community, that kind of gets people excited to, hey, maybe, you know, the city's starting to clean things up, we're starting to improve, let, let me fix my, my place, let me take care of my yard, you know, commercial businesses as well, you know, they, it's kind of a, you know, the rolling tumbleweed kind of effect, hey, let's, let's do it too. So to me, that's what I would consider steps towards city beautification.
That's super helpful for some additional meat on the bones, given how amorphous this is. Mayor, do you have any additional comments or Councilman, do you have any additional comments about other beautification efforts?
Yes, to the point that I know that we push for proactive, proactive, but at the same time, I don't want them, I don't want our code enforcement, officers to go through the backyard of their house and, and, and dig out dirt from, you know, we just have to make sure that the front area, the front yards, you know, to be kept clean and kept, you know, mooring grass and, you know, all those things. Because I can see that if you drive around, you can see a lot of people, you know, they, they actually have stuck in their front yards and, and all over the place, then that, you know, that, I think from, from their code enforcement standpoint, we need to take proactive in that term.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe it's the public facing side of everything. So if it's in a backyard, sort of it being some massive violation of their, you know, something crazy.
If someone reports something that's obviously, something that we can't see, you know, and our staff can't see, that's handled a different way. But yes, to, to your point, there, there's a lot of low hanging fruit that people can, you know, can address and our code enforcement officers can look at. Certainly there will be focus on that. If there are things that are reported though, that are a little bit more extensive, that require permission to be on some of the property, those will be handled, you know, accordingly.
Definitely, yeah.
But yes, totally understand what you're saying. You know, one thing I do want to just touch on, Vice Mayor's comments about, you know, residential investments, et cetera, there is a, you know, there, there is a difficulty of, you know, just your, just your everyday, you know, homeowner or so wants to redo something in their home of accessing, you know, of under, kind of understanding our standards, right? So what are you allowed to plant in your front yard? What are you allowed to, to do to, you know, to, to improve like the aesthetics of your home? And one of the things that as part of looking at processes and, and creating, you know, how-to sheets and flow charts, et cetera, you know, we've, we've been discussing for quite some time now, putting together like an idea. So one thing that we're, that we had discussed a few years ago was this idea on, you know, creating drought tolerant, like a, a guide for drought tolerant plants for your business or drought tolerant plants for your, you know, for your home. And it was going to have standards of what you're allowed to put in, what some good examples of what, you know, what this would look like, et cetera. But because of obviously the changes in staff and leadership, it's been very difficult to, to get to that point, but, but we completely understand, you know, some of the things that we can do to, to get people interested and, and just familiar with our standards.
Yeah, I remember when we had the, Jake, what was the, the park where we had the?
Coronet.
The, the water.
So those are the conservation gardens?
No, not that one. We had, well, that one too, but a while back ago, we had a park.
We have Coronet Park.
Coronet Park.
Yeah, we have a wild award. And then that is, that's one of the location that we have, the conservation type of drought tolerant plants.
And that's where that conversation came, let's develop a, you know, put on our website guides to, for homeowners to have, you know, drought tolerant plants, ideas of landscaping of that nature. So that, that's where that came about, yeah. And I agree.
And there was actually a law that came out, you know, as far as for commercial properties where like, you don't have to water, water your grass anymore and they.
For sure.
Yeah, so actually there's a state bill that prohibited the, they called it non-functional grass or non-functional turf. So that will be rolled out slowly, a program that we contact those businesses and tell them that you have to convert those grass area, those turf area into a different drought tolerant plants. And, you know, they still have some rebate from the county, but, you know, but they still have to pay a significant amount to make that conversions. But that's, that's, you know, like I said, that's a requirement from the state now.
Yeah, okay. And on this one that we were talking about, you know, steps towards city beautification, and I talked about implementing, I know Garden Grove, they just did like, because they had the strawberry festival, so they did a huge strawberry and the street art. And I'm assuming it was on a city-owned property, so.
So I can touch a little bit on that. So as part of the closeout for the 405 Improvement Project, there is a, a infusion of cash that the city is going to receive for art that is owed to us on all the public bridges, all the 405 bridges. Right now, as you drive over the bridges in the city, the new ones, there's a stainless steel plate, there's nothing on it. The idea would be to work with the council to, to identify art that could be placed at those locations. That would, and I've been waiting for that program to launch so that we could, in alignment with that, also kick off our utility box art, which I know the Vice Mayor, you've been very patiently waiting for that, for close to four years now, let's be honest, right? So it's about four years now that we've been.
I'm used to waiting.
Yeah, thank you for that. Your patience.
Vice Mayor, sorry, and Assistant Manager, it's nine o'clock. I set my timer for nine, but we passed nine. I know a meeting goes to nine, but I have to excuse myself. So thank you guys.
But you went away into the, Mayor gets back. Russ has taken another recess.
Let me take another five minute break.
Oh, there he is.
Mayor, I have to excuse myself. Our meetings end at nine, so that's all I put down for nine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're almost done, right? So I want to repeat myself, but so we're ready to launch that. Thank you for your patience on that. So, and this, the, the utility box art, we'll have to figure out how to fund that. Shouldn't be an issue. I know that there's a, there's a, I initiated conversations with, with a local business that, that works with artists. There's different ways of, of implementing that. And our senior management analyst, Shawna, was working with, investigating how to roll that out. The other one's pretty easy because we will have the funding to be able to implement art on bridges. That, that along with like the, the investments of our bike trails, Mendez Park, where we have interactive panels, the Hoover Trail will be, will be finishing that at the end of the year. That also has interpretive panels and, and, and that, that, that idea behind it. We're also always seeking opportunities for grant funding to take some of these corridors and implement more unique lighting. I know Jake's implemented lighting projects over the years. There's opportunities for our traffic signals to be spruced up, revamped, painted, look different. A lot of cities are doing that. So we're, we're looking for opportunities and really going back to what the city manager said about the Little Saigon blueprint, that gives us an opportunity because that's specifically outlined as an implementation measure of that study. And it's a very unique area. Little Saigon would be a great, Bolso Avenue would be a great corridor to implement that type of activity. And then obviously take that to other areas of the city.
Yeah, very good. So I don't know, I don't know what the when and the who on this, on this particular.
It's pretty broad. I was trying to, I mean, frankly, we just covered a bunch of great territory and different options. I love the specifications. I think in the course of my conversation with council, I also heard about median improvements and gateway signage and whatnot, welcoming you to the city and what those experiences are like in particular, as you start to enter the city. So there's probably additional territory to cover here. I'm trying to come up with something to like, package this up as like, what can we do? Because there's a million directions to go. I feel like this is. I feel like this is, come back to council with some options and some updates on programs. We just heard a bunch listed by your Assistant City Manager and your Public Works Director. That feels like the natural response to me about where we'd come back to you on with some programs and some updates.
So the who will be your?
I was still thinking the interim code enforcement manager, because they are part of, you know, going around and make sure that there is no sofa laying around or stuff laying around the, you know.
I suspect it'll be a combination of interim code enforcement manager with probably, I mean, some of these programs span the city, so you start to get to the city manager's office at that point to discuss them, is kind of my take on that.
Well, this one right here, the code enforcement is above, but this one is more assist steps to beautification, improve quality of life. And we're talking about utility box art, so that would be more.
You're saying because it's new implementation, it wouldn't exactly be, I would say the city manager's office would be the overarching. All of this is public, so it'd be obviously working very closely with Public Works Director.
Yeah, Public Works Director on this, that's what I was thinking, Public Works Director.
Okay. And then the follow-up point would be timeline, when we might think we could provide an update to, we're looking like summary memo of various programs and ideas that we may want to pursue or the status of some of those efforts.
We're closing out the 405 project, we're very close, so we will have that money in hand as part of, we'll have money in hand soon, and I would say somewhere in September, we could come back with a program outlines for actually starting to implement it. And that's timely because I think the, well, let me take that back, that's timely because the original idea was to implement student art. So that would, that would coincide with the beginning of the new school year. So I would think we would bring it to council in September and then engage the school districts, maybe the Orange County Department of Ed to, to see where we could locate some of this art that would go on these bridges and kind of coincide this, this fresh activity with the new school year.
Okay. Let's move through. So these other three, as noted here, were, I didn't have consensus on them, but they came up in the process. Some of these are pretty meaty, so, and there wasn't necessarily consensus, so I need to hear from council and the deists. First one was continue addressing homelessness issues throughout the city. I doubt there's any objection to that, you all want to address homelessness. That's also an ongoing activity, which isn't really a strong objective to identify towards, unless there's a specific objective you all might have in mind in terms of addressing that. I know we'll be, usually the demarc for these things is a homeless census count and having a sense of where your numbers are going, which is, I will just say, sometimes a fraught process, because that data can vary for reasons that are beyond our control. But I welcome discussion on this.
Well, homelessness is still continued, and issues ongoing.
Correct.
Problems, ongoing issues, but at this time here, I believe that we have a quarterly update from the, from our police.
Yes, sir.
About the Navigation Center, I believe as for that, right?
So, yes, so there are quarterly homeless updates, that is actually coming on the next, the next council meeting agenda.
Okay, all right. So, it will be continued.
So do you need to keep it on there? Because we're already, we're already doing them, sustaining, we're already doing quarterly updates.
Yeah, because we don't need to have.
So that's, I was, if there's anything new beyond, there were some specific concerns cited with cleanup around the 405 area, with some Caltrans areas that caused some problems, is my recollection from my discussions with a council member and.
Yeah, no, those are true, but I don't know if they fall under this, this homelessness section of it.
As, as we take it out, because it's already an ongoing thing.
Okay. There was, in my process, there was a council member discussion that just raised broad concerns about crime and public safety, challenges in that area, kind of ongoing vigilance. Again, I never met a city council that doesn't want to fight crime, and I suspect that's no different here in the great city of Westminster, that you are, like most Orange County cities, ready to fight crime tooth and nail. So I don't have any specific objective to identify here, and this may very well go the way of the homeless conversation we just had as well, but unless there's so many specific objectives or concerns you wish to raise, other than reaffirming your commitment to public safety.
Yeah, I think we're already doing it. Unless, PD, do you have anything to add on here?
You guys are going to get the first quarter crime stat update next meeting as well. Think you guys will be pleased.
But there's, as far as addressing public safety issues, there's nothing, do you have something?
Ongoing.
It's ongoing, it's ongoing, yeah.
Unless there, I know there were, there have been certain council, certain council members, you've expressed different things over time, as far as specific locations or specific types of crimes, like, you know, break-ins to businesses, et cetera. But, you know, those are certainly things that, that are a lot more specific, but we can certainly discuss those, you know, if there are certain things that you would want our staff to do. But that, I guess that would coincide with our quarterly update, if anything.
Yeah, we have quarterly updates from PDs and also from fires. And so, you know, we can, we can always address further.
Okay, so take it off.
We'll take it off. All right, and then last item is one that came up in a conversation around, partly it was a suggestion that I had noted where I'd seen a number of communities that were doing a kind of dumpster days, and they take into difficult neighborhoods, they bring a dumpster in and have cleanup days or cleanup weeks and really try to promote that community to do some cleanup work. It's very program-specific, but it raised a broader question about all the various partnerships that we really have with other overlaying government agencies, who should be our partners in trying to address these beautification objectives. So we identified this as like, how can we spark engagement and community pride, not just with the community itself, but with our city partners that are overlaying partners in this effort to support our beautification efforts. So I think actually it seems like a really important idea, given some of the entities that are listed here, that we'd have to come back with some programmatic identification of what that might be and some obviously dialogues and conversation with some of these other agencies, but this seemed like a pretty natural out, kind of outspend of this effort.
Yeah, I have communicated with MCSD, Midway City Sanitary District, staff there, you know, and I'm kind of giving them the idea to sit down with the city of staff so that we can come up with, you know, some effort together, that we can clean up this city in terms of periodically, that, and I don't know whether we can do that or not, but they need to sit down and see if they can work together on that. I don't know, what about staff, city staff? They, they, they agreed to look into that, but I don't know from the city staff, you have any concern over that?
So I, you know, as far as MCSD, for example, they've been great supportive partners, you know, the city for, for a lot of the efforts. I know they have very specific initiatives, so you have different cleanup events that you do, et cetera. Certainly, we can further engage that conversation with MCSD, especially since, you know, leadership changed a few years ago in that organization. Not a problem to sit in front of them when we, when we've had issues, we've had, we haven't had a problem collaborating with them on certain things. Jake can speak a little bit more to that as well.
So currently, the Midway Sanitary District, they do have programs, they do have several occasions that they take their bins, container to the parks and collect any, anybody bring in their bulky items. So that's been going on, you know, throughout the year already, I would say at least three or four events like that.
Yeah.
But as far as enhance, as far as, you know, I guess doing more, I understand where some of the concerns have been, and they're doing their, they're doing their bins and their own thing, and we're not exactly doing our, you know, how could we?
As far as collaborating, like we as a city go out with, with them and have a joint, joint event and.
The, the event that you just mentioned about, that they have five events every year, sometimes six events, but they are going from park to park, and they have the bins there. For the people who are willing to take those unused items and they want to throw them away, so they will take it away. But I'm talking about those items that for the people who just, you know, bring it to different areas and they just dump it there, in the back of their supermarket or something, or the back alley, nobody going to pick them up, because it's not under their responsibilities and, and, you know, it's under city responsibility. And if we don't do that, then it will be there forever.
So Jake, why don't you share some of the efforts that you're looking at in cleaning public right of way?
Sure, so for the public item or abandoned items in the public light right of way.
Yes.
When we receive this report from the, either from the residents or from the council, from any, even staff, myself, I go out and want to see them, we send staff out there and pick them up and take them out, dump sites. So we very proactively doing that every day, and that's on top of these, you know, the work with the CPU as well.
Yes, I use the app pretty often and report discarded items on public, within public view, but I don't know if the mayor, I mean, I don't know if it's worth it having instead of, I know they do it on the park, I don't know, is it, can we do it in a neighborhood? Can we do it like, bring those trash bins to a neighborhood?
I, I don't know, maybe we can suggest that idea to them, but what I'm saying is not in certain neighborhood, but, you know, some time on small streets on Bolsa, on different areas, we saw the trash everywhere, you know, littered by, by those homelessness. And nobody cleaned it up, because the, I mean, the, the business there, they're not going to take care of it, because it's on the, on the street. And, and, you know, I don't know who, who's responsible to do those sort.
So if any debris or any abandoned item in a public right of way, Public Works, we do take care of that. But if they have trash or, you know, any homeless encampment on the private property, we probably need help from PD as well, code enforcement, or NCPU that come out and, and, you know, work on that issue. But like I said, any debris that in the public right of way, Public Work is responsible for discarding them.
It's just that we need to sit down and talk about it and see what we can do together to make it.
Yeah, I agree with the Mayor, he's, there is, I, I use the app a lot, I know quite a few residents who do also use it, but yes, I would, I don't know if it's hiring more community preservation unit, or maybe changing the, maybe how Public Works do it, but there is items or discards that are out there for quite, you know, days, you know, sometimes even weeks, and until somebody calls it in or reports it, you know, and if it's, to me, if it's in public view, it's something that we should take care of, you know, hopefully our team sees it before it being reported. So I don't know if it's something that we need to just talk to the team, is that you need to be out there patrolling more often and don't, don't just wait for the report, you know.
Right, so, so we do rely on the app, report from the app, as well as staff when it sees on the street. Like I said, myself driving around, I call it in for, for my staff. There's a lot of time that people have scheduled their bulky item pickup together with the trash. So we cannot just come in and take those, you know, like I said, abandoned, we think it's abandoned, but they are scheduled with the Midway Sand for picking up already. So we have to be careful on that one.
Well, I understand from Midway Sand, they only pick up in the front of their house on the day that they pick up the trash, otherwise they are not going to pick up anywhere else.
Correct, correct, what I'm saying.
So the resident need to call in and identify the items that they want to pick up, and they have to bring it out in their front, right next to their trash can on the day that they pick up the trash. Otherwise, if they don't, if they brought, bring it out and they don't call Midway City or they have it in different area, it will be there forever.
No, absolutely. Like I said, we, when we go out and we see the piece of abandoned or discarded item on a public right of way with no trash can next to it, we absolutely pick them up right of way. When we see somebody like right in front of the property with a trash can, so we know that there has been scheduled with Midway Sand District for picking up. But anything in public right of way, when we've been notified or we receive the app, would, you know, my staff would, athletes are going to go out and take them away.
So we've been talking a little bit about the obvious bulky object, things that catch our eye, and one of the other things that, that's been initiated recently, and Jake could talk more about it, is when you just have a corridor that seems unkept, you have glass, you have not a big box, but you have just a collection of debris along the corridor. Jake has now implemented a more proactive approach to systematically going through the city and addressing these concerns. Would you like that?
Yes, absolutely. So we've been basically focused on our contractor for the meetings to focus on there's the area that you do the maintenance, to make, make sure that they take a look at those. My staff's also driving the main corridors or main materials to look at any debris that is on the street, and so our staff can pick them up. And, but again, like I said, we cannot be everywhere at the same time. So we're trying to be proactive, but we still rely on the residents or anybody reported and we're absolutely going to act on it.
Let me ask you this question then, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Let me ask you this question, then, every street in our city, do we have what we call sweet, street where sweeping day going in right now, or certain street, only certain street?
Every, every residential street being swept twice a month.
Okay, all right.
So like every two weeks.
Now, you said residents, what about business?
Materials, materials, some of them being swept together with the residential, some material, for example, like Bolsa, Westminster, they've been swept, been swept weekly.
Okay. You know, something that I would, just reminded me that what I think that we need to do, and I think I spoke this about repeat offenders, repeat violators, I should say, there is quite, I can think of a few properties that are, that they're repeatedly, I would say the tenants of that particular multifamily property, where they're repeatedly dumping things in front on, close to the city sidewalk. I think we need to really come up with something that we are, is we can't keep going back there every single time, every single time they dump something. We need to make contact with the property owner and issues, either, you know, warning citations, because they need to make sure that their themselves are policing their own tenants and, and instructing them that they cannot dump furniture onto the, in front of the public right of way. And it's just, I can give you a list of just the same ones. And if we just keep picking it up, they're like, oh, well, just put it out, the city's going to come and get it. And they think that it's normal, that it's, that's what you do, that's what you do, is put it there in the city, it'll come and get it.
You bring up a very good point. In fact, last week, Deputy Chief Ron Weber, he sat with our, he sat with our code enforcement team and our interim code enforcement manager, as well as our homeless liaison officers, to really address the issue of, like, it's one thing to be out there proactively dealing with the homeless activities, but it's another thing for us to voluntarily pick up debris on private property. So our code, our interim code enforcement manager, I got to give him credit for stepping up and saying that's not appropriate, we need to go the violation route, or else we're enabling bad behavior. So that is something that we are actually working on doing.
Yes, that's, that's what I was just thinking, because I know this, I can give you four locations and it's just, and to me, they, what I, I hate to repeat myself again, but the tenants, I'm thinking, they think that that's what you do, you know, just put it out there. And so we need to know, go and knock on door or make contact with the property owner.
So Public Works have, we call it a hotspot information, that's mean this, that's repeating locations that we keep picking up this stuff, so we're absolutely going to be working with code enforcement manager and give him those locations, so at least he can talk to the property owners. A lot of time, we talk to them and they basically blame it on the tenant just moved out. And they don't, they couldn't schedule anything, they couldn't, so they put it in behind the alley or put it in something in front, and that person already left. So that's, that's a lot of those excuses, but I think it's good that we work with code enforcement, so they can continue, put the responsibility on the property owner as far like apartment complex.
And since we're on that subject, commercial sites, they have a large parking lots, I can, there's a couple I can think of on Bolsa, where I'm assuming a large commercial site like that that has a large parking lot, that they should be having those vacuum trucks go out there and vacuum all the trash up, you know, and that, I don't see that happening. And there's some parking lots that have a lot of, lot of trash on their parking lot, but we're not responsible for that? I mean, what can we do as far as addressing that?
That's also through the code, that's part of the discussion we had last week with our interim code enforcement manager, is because that debris, it ends up blowing into the bus shelter, it ends up blowing into the street, and then it does become our problem. So, yeah, we are, we are addressing those unkept proper, commercial properties. Particularly, sorry, Christine.
That's all right.
Particularly, sorry, Christine, particularly the large ones that, that are run by reputable companies and they have tenants. I mean, that they're clearly not struggling, they just need to be, the expectations need to be set higher.
Well, yeah, we appreciate that Public Works have done a lot of things. As you mentioned, you know, we appreciate for that. But at the same time, going back to that item, I think that we should still need to be engaged with, with those identified there, see if we can identify new opportunities and to partnership with them and do, you know, to take care of their, the problem that we have at hands, if there is any that we haven't taken care of.
Do you have thoughts on timeline for that?
I mean, I'd say this is probably going to be just initiation of conversations to begin with, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we can easily do that, easily do that by June.
Okay.
Probably earlier than that, but, you know.
By June, that means you can do early in that.
Yeah, and, and just to keep in mind, a lot of, keep in mind, a lot of June's a busy, it's going to be a very busy eight weeks right now. But some of these, you know, conversations don't necessarily, or some of these objectives that rather, don't necessarily need to morph into something that's reportable. So we can certainly have conversations and see where that leads, but, yeah, us doing it by June doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go to council and let you know how it went by June.
Fair enough. Okay. That is our last objective we identified. Is there any other objective under this area? This is really healthy, robust conversation about that trust stuff, so I'm glad we had the experts in the room to have it. Anything else that we wish to identify or objectives here?
Thank you, Greg.
No?
On behalf of the city council and city staff, we'd like to thank you for your time in a very productive meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate the four hours plus of your time, too, Mayor.
So at this time, I, I will close out the meeting and we adjourn the meeting and we'll see you next time.
Thank you very much for your time and staff, everybody. Thank you.
And if, again, thank you, council, obviously, for this effort, strategic plan effort is, you know, it's, it's not an easy one and it takes a lot of brain power and, and commitment to it. And, you know, I just appreciate what the council does and your ideas and input for this, so, so thank you for the direction.
Yeah, thank you very much, all. Appreciate it. And thank you for the staff.
I also want to thank Council, too. I mean, Leo Council. Thank you, City Attorney. And thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting until this time. Thank you.
I just want to say, we didn't ask Vanessa any questions. She didn't get her up here for anything.
She, she had enough on her, her plate. Wait, wait until this Wednesday, you will see. Oh, by the way, this Wednesday is going to be April 20th, in the black April, at 10 o'clock at the Memorial Park. And so we'd like to invite each and every one of you, take some time to go out there at 10 o'clock in the morning.